It's March 6th, it is 9:00 AM. I would ask that people in the audience not livestream or meeting while it is in session because it eats up a lot of bandwidth. And with that, I would ask Mr. Gary Hyde, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
I'll do roll call.
And Madam Secretary, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Fowler, Chair.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda, Vice Chair.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
County Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
Deputy Clerk to the Board Lori Bistado, present.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Gentlemen, any amendments to the agenda?
I do not have any, sir.
Nor do I here. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Can, I honestly don't know the answer, and they say never ask, so I don't know the answer to it. Can you amend the agenda on the day of the meeting on something that you are going to vote on?
That's a great question. The answer to that really is no. We could amend the agenda to put in an item of discussion, but to vote on it's supposed to have 24-hour notice.
Thank you.
I agree with that.
Okay. Good point, thank you. Audience introductions, ma'am.
Judge Beavis for the settlement.
Gary Hyde, Bruin Bridge.
Thank you.
Maybe we tweak the agenda instead of amending it.
Yeah. And I don't believe we have any approval of minutes today. We will tomorrow, but not today unless, gentlemen, know something I'm not aware of.
I thought we had two days.
It's on tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It's on tomorrow, gentlemen, we got it.
Yeah, we did receive them.
I have all my papers for today, okay, no problem.
Yeah, it's on the agenda for tomorrow.
You're ahead of the ball.
We got something to do tomorrow.
Commissioner items, Mr. Kanda?
No, I get to be last of the day.
Oh, okay. Mr. Prince?
Thank you. I've met with the Wetmore Community Board. Still some significant issues that are just kind of lingering on. I wrote a little more terse note than I normally would to Tom Duke, the contractor, excuse me, he's the architect, but he's the one we go to to get things fixed. And I copy-popped both of you, basically just kind of maybe add a little teeth to it. I was hoping that these lingering things really need to get resolved. They have some concerns about warranty issues, the one-year warranty for the building will be ending in the near future.
When is that exactly?
I think it's in, I think it's in May.
May?
Yeah. And I mentioned to them, and I'm certainly over the discussion if I feel I told them the right thing, I said, you know, it's an aging building, but we put a lot of upkeep, you know, upgrading to it. We have lots of buildings, and we don't have maintenance agreements with it. So I said, you know, let's try and get everything done we can before the warranty runs out, and then we'll just maintain it as we do all the rest of our buildings if that's acceptable with you guys. So that's basically what I told them.
Well, certainly if those things were part of a new construction.
Right, the new construction thing was under the warranty, but I think they were asking, I mean, they weren't asking for it, they were asking, will we have some kind of long-term maintenance contract? And I told them that I don't believe we have any with any of the other buildings, we probably would not do and just maintain it as things.
Just do it when we need it.
That's what I told them. So they seemed fine with that. Nana's gonna send a letter that we discussed about upgrading their library software. I told her we're not, we really can't do anything until we have facts and figures to discuss. I asked Brett to put that on the agenda for when we go down there in the middle of the month, because their people will be there so they could be a part of that discussion when it occurs. I met with Economic Development twice since the last meeting, just to discuss the things that are going on, and I think that's all I did.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Just a report of, let me pull that up, sorry. March 1st, I did attend the Medical Clinic Board Meeting, and then March 6th, of course, we had a personnel policy workshop, it's today, and then I plan to attend that, and then also the Republican Caucus tonight, I will attend that as well. And then I wanted to mention to both of you that if you are interested in getting code red alerts sent to you via your cellphone or other device, get ahold of Cindy Howard, and she will put you on her all-call list, and then you should also receive an email confirmation about who it, on the code red alert on your phone, it'll come over as an announcement, but you won't have any idea who that really is coming from, and then you'll get an email or a text message, I'm sorry, and it will stay on there, if it's coming from dispatch or Cindy Howard or whoever. So if you just want to contact her, she'll be here tomorrow, so I just wanted to mention that to you as well. And that's all I have.
One thing I just thought of, I'm sorry, I'm disjointed. We had a small brush fire down at Wetmore, and they got it out pretty quickly, and Ruth was at the meeting I had with them the other day, and I just complimented her on how great she looked in a fire person's uniform. I just thought I'd throw that in. She was Person of the Year and well-deserved.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. Commissioner Kanda?
Couple things after the meeting the other day, it's only been a few days ago, a lot of things happened. Went up with Roger Squire up Tower and checked in, huddled in the wind and cold in the little shed we have up there and looked at the antennas that were mounted, discussed the option of the value of owning that piece of ground vice, you know, just paying a little bit for it, collect the rent and that kind of thing. So that resulted in a meeting with Gary and Roger, went to see the guys on BLM Monday, last Monday, and Gary can talk to us a little bit about that meeting here in a minute. They are open to discussion, and it depends on whether they want to lose the revenue or want to give it to us to take, make about $3,000 a month right now, and they, we want to put a radio station in Colorado Springs on it, split it, split the cost maybe, or maybe we'll have to, we'll have to build a business plan to be determined. Also, we had that workshop with Rusty out there, and we talked about options to acquire more land. Turns out that, I'm surprised we have as much forward future with what we've got out there, something like, what was it, 29 years if we, especially if we annex some adjacent ground, we've got to figure out what that'll be yet. And there are some horse trade we can do, it turns out we own a piece of ground down on Grave Creek we can horse trade with. Or we can make a park to, I think Cinderhoff had an idea way back in the 70s, make that a fishing fun place to put in with the bike trail or something, you know, there's something to do to economic, things we can discuss in the future. Also called up the Rice family and told them that we were considering it, but it's, the fall of that ground didn't look good enough to take a lot of money to build the berm to make sure the water wasn't going to wash through the landfill. And so, but it's still an option, if they sell it, then fine, if they don't, we can consider it with other options. Also, we'll have to get ahold of Kick, is it Kickroom that has the golf course?
Jerry, Kickroom.
We need to get him to make a presentation soon because Cinderhoff's got it listed. I don't, they were gonna, I tried to get him, tell me whether they signed the contract yet, but he said last week it would have closed, it would have headed on the market, and it's up for farm or whatever use, so if we want to, and I know there's options that Jerry was talking to all of us about perhaps making a first, write a fusil on the thing or whatever as we get going down, but we need to do it sooner than later, we're gonna lose the opportunity if we want it. I'm prepping for the caucus, too, here we go, hang on, only you guys get to sit back, you bums. Don't print that. They're sluggards, they got, I have to, seems like we just quit election and here we go again. That's tonight, I'm looking forward to it because it'll be fun in the end. Collected cash, we had a, if you remember, we had a fuel pump problem out at the airport, fixing that, also fixing the display because you can't read it, it got fried in the sun apparently. And we had one plane that actually drew gas and didn't have to pay a dime, and it happened to be a friend of mine, so he lives in Virginia, and sent us a check, I gotta give it to Virginia, and it was about $500 even. So all that, so, you know, could have happened.
So what happened to him? Could it have happened to other people who weren't so honest?
Yeah, and fully. It was a glitch in how the trigger triggers the actual tally to go on, and it gets out of sync, and people can load it up, the pump works fine, and it brings out a receipt that says zero.
Wow.
It did.
I'm bringing my car over there.
Yeah, or your lawn, bring your lawnmowers over. So anyway, that'll be fixed, that's not a big deal, it's just something that has to be done, and they have the budget to cover it, so Alan will tell us more about that later. And then...
So are they gonna lock that up until that gets fixed, or what are they doing?
No, it's, they reset it and they're watching it.
So it's functional now?
Yeah. And, you know, they're still gonna consider other options to help, you know, I believe, and I've talked to Alan about it, we'll present it, I'd like to get the towns to help subsidize the fuel a little bit at some point to bring airplanes in here and be competitive with Walsenburg. You know, doesn't cost much for advertising, and I'll have to talk to the mayors, that's what Alan and I will do at some point, and see what their interest might be, throw a couple thousand bucks at us a year and drive the price below Fremont County, and, you know, believe me, pilots will make the jog up here if it looks viable from a town point of view. And they come into town, we're gonna have to reinvigorate the car out there, that, you know, the loaner car at most of these airports, we'll have to see what that, E-boss, it's just something in the thought process right now. And Gary's gonna talk to us here in a minute, and we'll talk about what the plan is for her. It's good news, and that's all I got.
Good, thank you. Commissioner, Counselor, any items, sir?
Just briefly, I did some more research concerning the Airport Advisory Board and the Weed Advisory Board, actually I had a menu, a memo that I was working on, but I'll have it for you tomorrow. The Weed Advisory Board is truly just an advisory board per statute, but we never established one, Kelly did a lot of research for me on this, and as far as she can determine, we never established the Weed Advisory Board by resolution. Things have been functioning for, since 1996, I guess, without that.
On a handshake.
Yeah, but it, and frankly, we do need to get the people, anybody who's expressed an interest in being on the board again this year, we need to, I think, either have a workshop or something and get started on that. With Shannon, as she's gonna be here today, our new extension agent, I would like to talk to her about her position regarding being on that board, because Robin Young was, of course, and I was informed that the CSU Extension didn't really want their extension agents to be on the Weed Board, but I'd like to know how she feels about that and find out if it's something she's interested in doing. The Airport Board, I did some more research on that, it appears to me that when it was established as an Airport Authority Board back in 1994, with, you know, a whole separate political entity, when that was dissolved in 2011, there wasn't really any kind of transition other than changing the name and taking away their authority to make decisions on certain things, but there was an airport fund that was already in existence that has just continued in existence, and as an advisory board, I'm not sure whether it should really even have, it's going to be an advisory board. If it's going to be a board like we talked about, then I guess they could have their own fund, but I think, well, it's just something we need to figure out how we want to handle that, and also that was never created by resolution, it just looks to me, as far as I can tell, it just transitioned into an Airport Advisory Board upon the dissolution of the Authority Board without anything else happening. The other thing, as I worked with Jackie Hobbie, periodically she has me write letters to people with zoning violations that she has tried to communicate with, and they haven't been responsive, so I write a letter explaining what the, it's kind of a good cop, bad cop thing, explaining what the possible penalties are for not responding, dealing with these violations, some are more serious than others, you know, the septic violations particularly, but, so I've worked on a number of those with her over the past week or so, wrote letters, and we'll see whether that lights a fire. I guess that's all I've been doing since our last meeting.
I'll ask Alan, and he ought to consider, because he was involved in that airport from the beginning and all the transitions, to see what kind of a resolution, I think they ought to bring it forward and consider what the authorities, the fund and all that thing, because it's...
Yeah, Jackie Hobbie actually has, she had a big three-ring binder on the airport going back a long way, and I borrowed that and looked through it, and because I think the bylaws they're operating under are still the bylaws that were adopted by the Authority Board instead of the Advisory Board.
And they need to clean it up.
So, okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, I had a discussion with Shannon concerning the Weed Advisory Board or whatever we're gonna call it, I guess.
Yeah, that's what it is by statute.
And she can certainly speak to that, but we have been working on that, we're also working on reinvigorating that committee, that board.
Yeah, there was one thing in there, the majority of the board has to be property owners in the county that have 40 acres or more, and I frankly don't think there's a majority on there right now that has that much land, and so that's something that we should, by statute, that's a requirement.
Right, yeah, so we need to try to dig up, yeah, dig up, first of all, if they have a set of bylaws or whatever they're functioning under or...
They do have bylaws, I actually worked with Robin a couple of years ago to get their bylaw, and the bylaws track the statute, the bylaws are fine, except they're not really following their own bylaws, because it talks about, it has to be a majority of proper, you know, owners over 40 acres, and I don't think they have that right now.
So who did CSU think should be that, Tom?
They didn't, I mean...
They just didn't want extension agents to do it.
But they, Bill Nobles directed her to serve as a, really as an ex officio member of that board.
Well, that's how Robin actually was doing it.
But not, not as the county weed director.
It's a big deal, I know the CCI guys are...
Robin, that was part of her expertise, I mean, she was really very, very knowledgeable.
Yeah, she did. Shannon may not, I don't know what her background...
So we'll have to look at...
What did Shannon think, could she be then or not?
She doesn't mind being on the board as a member, but certainly is not going to be in a position to chair it or direct that effort, so. And again, I'll let Shannon speak to that, I got an email from her yesterday about an area director that is not inclined to take on Custer County.
What are you thinking, Tom, are you thinking?
I think we're gonna have to look at...
Should we do it temporarily?
No, I don't think so, I think we're gonna have to find somebody, we'll get this board fired up, and I would think then ask if any of those members want to step up in that leadership role, if not, I think we're gonna have to find somebody. You know, I don't know that it has to be somebody that's a technical expert in the beginning, they can learn that, just as Robin did. I think it's, it can be a process, but I don't, I really don't see Shannon being in the role that our previous extension director was, so she's been directed not to do that. I don't know, we're gonna have to throw some money at that position, I'd love to find somebody that has a real desire for that, would volunteer to do that, so that would be my preference, try to find somebody.
You don't want to set a precedent, I don't know what the other counties do with them.
Well, they cost-share, typically they cost-share director. But, I don't know, we'll, again, let's have a conversation with Shannon later, and then move forward from there would be my recommendation. Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay, good, thank you. Administrative Assistant, any items, Ms. Brenda?
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into Staff Reports, by golly, we're a little ahead of the curve this morning, so that's good. We'll start with Road and Bridge, Mr. Hyde. How are you, sir? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
My second morning.
Hey, Gary. Been out digging in the cold out there.
Well, I went out, I went out to Herman, I picked up my traffic counter.
You got that.
And unfortunately, it malfunctioned, so I don't have it.
So I'm gonna scratch what I was gonna ask you about that?
Yeah, I was really disappointed, it's almost like getting to Christmas morning and opening up a gift and nothing being in the box.
A pair of socks.
Yeah. So I'm gonna have to figure out what my glitch is on that thing, so.
You had it out once before, too, right?
Yeah, and then the snow interrupted my traffic count, you know, we were predicted to get some snow, and I didn't want to see it get damaged by a plow or something like that.
Good boy, yeah.
Had to back up, and this time it just malfunctioned. Before I forget this, it's a signature sheet that we've got to turn into a C-dot for our UTEF funds, we have to update that every year and then get commissioners' signatures on it.
Okay, you're gonna need all three, yeah?
Oh, yes.
Lots of commissioners, we better get some more.
Lots for 10 of them.
Yeah, five anyway. El Paso County's got five, so, but we didn't have any changes this year, so we'll just submit that.
Okay, sir, what else?
Safety meetings, after we spoke last time, four weeks ago approximately, I gave that more thought, and I felt like, I think Tom had mentioned it one time, you know, possibly having those as often as one week apart, every week, and so I, I thought that was probably a good idea, so that's the, that's what we're doing now. Every Monday morning, we're having a safety meeting, and it usually lasts anywhere from, oh, 20 to 40 minutes. I typically show a film or two, and then we discuss that film, and then we'll pick a different topic every week, and this is, this is the first three that we've had, I've got a signature sheet on there that, well, it's basically an attendance sheet that has everyone's names.
Excellent, that's gonna help the county if there is an incident that they've been trained, and hopefully that will help reduce that, I think that's a great deal, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, outstanding, thank you. And then these, these were the topics that you addressed on that particular day?
Mm-hmm, it's got the topic on there, what we've discussed, and then my resource as far as where I'm getting my videos, so I'm not duplicating anything, and I've got that documented on there also.
Yeah, outstanding, thank you for doing that. I think we will reap the benefits of that, not only because we're gonna work safer, but obviously we'll have some strategies in place if we end up in some issues. What time typically do you try to start those meetings?
Just shortly after 7:00, right around 7:10.
Okay, and would it be appropriate if any or all of us were to visit from time to time and sit in on those, or?
Yeah, that'd be fine with us.
And where do you have them at?
There, a break room at the Road and Bridge, just on the north side of my office.
You can get everybody in there, huh?
Barely. It'll be kind of tight, but we can manage.
Can't get the donuts in too soon.
Yeah. Yeah, excellent, I commend you for that, sir, thank you for doing it, that's outstanding.
And then it was mentioned to be at one time our account with Airgas and our bottled rental and things like that, so I've done some research on that, and I did discover that we've got, actually, after talking to Airgas, we've got 25 of those cylinders on our account, and we've only got 17 in our possession, so somehow or another, there's...
Including Wetmore?
Including Wetmore. There, yeah, there's eight bottles that are unspoken.
Some of them walked off, huh?
Well, I, I think that it was...
They lost track, maybe.
Well, I think that's what happened, their paperwork at the Airgas Office got shuffled around, and they lost track of what we've actually got, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna start an audit on these bottles to find out where are those.
Which ones are gone.
Yes.
They might find them.
I hope they do, because we don't have them, I counted all of them.
And I'm assuming if they come up and do an audit on those bottles and their count matches our count of 17, then they're gonna take those other eight off the books.
I hope so, they should.
Or if they find them in their records somewhere else, somebody...
Yeah, that's what they're gonna do, they're gonna go back on records and see where they made the mistake, hopefully they'll discover something. But I did find out that we're being charged anywhere from 70 to 80 cents per day per bottle, and after doing the crunching of numbers on all this, that I, I found out that for what we're paying rent on these bottles, we can actually purchase them. The same amount of money can go towards purchasing them, so I think, you know, I think that's the way to go.
And in the long run, it'll save the county.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we spend approximately $4,300 a year to rent them, and that same money will buy those bottles, according to what they're telling us.
And that's a one-time expense.
Yeah, and then we don't, don't pay the rent on them anymore, so that's what I'm looking at and to do.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, and to be honest with you, I kind of dropped the ball, I never did anything further as far as snooping around with Airgas either, so thank you for doing that, yeah. Do you have some Rusty out at Landfill? Do you have cutting torch or anything out there? Okay, so it's just between you guys and Wetmore, no other departments?
No, there shouldn't be any more bottles unspoken for, other than what we've got at Road and Bridge.
Rusty be torching off the landfill.
I wonder, surely there's not a set of bottles on a cart over here in the garage, I just couldn't imagine it, but I don't know that, I haven't been in there.
I was in there, I didn't notice any.
When you say in the garage?
Oh, there's a garage right here across the street by the annex.
Where the four-wheelers is, or whatever we call it.
We have six-wheelers, lots at the Sheriff's Department, and some vehicles, so I may just stick my head in there to make sure, but I can't imagine, unless the maintenance people had requested one, but...
Tell them the good news on Herman.
Good news.
More or less good news.
Well, it's...
You've been talking to a lot of people, haven't you?
Yeah, I've been trying to get some bids on, some prices on some box culverts concrete, but they're not real...
Pre-cast?
They're, pardon?
Pre-cast?
Yeah, they're not real good about getting back with me. I did get ahold of Brad Palmer with Lake County, they actually installed a structure, a structure of similar size to what we're considering getting, and that aluminum box culvert, and they had real good luck with it, they thought that...
Lasted long enough.
Yeah, they thought that was the way to go. The nice thing about it over galvanized is if the galvanized ever gets scratched to where it exposes the metal underneath, then you're gonna have rust and deterioration problems, you don't have to deal with that with aluminum.
And you throw a concrete dam in the front to keep the water from getting under, how do you handle that?
It's actually got a footer at the base of it, this is a four-sided, so it's got a bottom in it, and I've got some pictures that Brad sent me on that, that you can take a look at.
Are those aluminum box culverts four-sided as well?
They can be, or it can have a live bottom in it, you can put concrete foot, in fact, in the pictures you'll see where they used concrete footers.
That'd be better, I don't know, that's my gut.
According to Army Corps of Engineer, we could go with a four-sided, we could actually have a bottom in it.
Really?
As long as we put it at the base of the stream, and if there was any fish that wanted to go from one side to the other, they could, you just got to make it possible for them. But they had real good luck with it, they did all of this in-house, they did it all themselves.
And this is the aluminum? And this is the aluminum culvert here?
Yeah, and it's actually got, um, I don't know if you can see it, for strength, they've actually got ribs that bolt to the culvert itself also. I mean, they've got the ribs that are part of the structure itself and then they've got additional ribs that bolt to it, that give it additional strength.
Are they flush with the?
They're actually flush with the ribs themselves.
Is the lifespan the same for aluminum as it is for galvanized?
It's actually better.
Oh, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Is it a significantly more expensive?
No, it's pretty comparable in price. The, uh, the galvanized itself, well, usually they say anywhere from forty to fifty years on it. And on aluminum, you can probably get anywhere from sixty to eighty, maybe even more, so.
How cool is that?
It's, yeah, the longevity's-
Pretty easy decision.
Yes.
And then timing-wise, you were thinking maybe, uh, four to six weeks?
You know-
Depending on the contractor?
Yeah, you know, honestly, I can't imagine any more than four. The contractor's telling me too, but, you know, I always wanna add a little bit, you know, for unforeseen things, you know?
You double it, that's still boring.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This box culvert design, uh, this semi-circular thing, that's what you're looking at versus a rectangular opening?
Yep. The, uh, cubic feet of volume that we've got in there right now with the three six-foot culverts is right around eighty-five cubic feet for volume. And this being the size that it is, yeah, it's a hundred and twenty-four approximately, so. Yeah. And the nice thing about it is it's just one span versus three spans.
You don't get brush blocking the front end of it.
The likelihood of that is almost zero, so.
So you're thinking a hundred and twenty cubic feet on a culvert similar to this?
Uh, a hundred and twenty-five on this.
A hundred and twenty-five.
And it's twenty foot, uh, twenty-four foot span, six foot high. So we're gonna increase our volume by about forty cubic feet.
And you're still working on trying to get a price comparison between pre-cast concrete and this box culvert?
Yeah, I don't wanna rule the box, I mean, the pre-cast out versus this. I still wanna do a comparison on both.
How much cover you think would be required to go over the top of that?
Uh, an average of three. They're saying two to four.
In box, same thing, or in concrete?
Yeah.
So it doesn't change?
And the box culverts unfortunately will be three span probably, or at least two versus this span, a single span, so. I like the idea of this versus the box for that reason, yeah.
You say the aluminum had to be deeper than the galvanized?
Uh, no. Well, the, the bottom of it-
Cover over the top, I mean.
No, they're actually pretty similar.
You have a rough estimate on the cost of this?
Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five?
That's the quote I got last year. It may have gone up a little bit since then, but, uh, we can always adjust the size if we feel like that's too much money too. We can go with a smaller one or whatever, so.
Um, and that includes the wings out front and?
Yeah. Uh-huh, what they do is, yeah, that includes all the, uh, the wings, the header, the footer, pretty much everything.
Just not installation.
Not installation.
And light bottom, correct?
Uh, that actually has four sides. Live bottom would be the ones with the concrete footers, so.
So the wings are aluminum?
Yes. And they've got supports that go back to the header and then they've got dead men's supports on them also that keep them from giving any, once you go to backfilling. And I was gonna bring up something. We're still in the process of hauling rock out of the ditches out here on Herman to provide us with some material to crush for Chip Seal Rock. Greg Morrell contacted us yesterday and he lives west of Tom out here on Herman. He saw that we were hauling that material. He contacted us and when they built a barn out there four or five years ago, they, when they did their excavation, they ended up, well, you know what their materials like out there. It's got a lot of large rock in it. It's actually as good or better than the material we're hauling out of the ditches to supply us with some rock to crush. So anyway, he's probably, he estimated about fifteen loads out there, tandem dump truck loads of material, but it's more like forty or fifty. There's probably about four hundred ton of material, which is a lot. But anyway, he called me and asked me if we were interested in that because he didn't have a use for it.
Wanted to give it away?
He wanted to give it away, which would really benefit the county. It just adds to the material we're gonna be able to crush. So anyway, this morning I went out and I met with him, Roger and I looked at it, and it's ideal material. My only concern is when someone offers material like that, that I don't do anything that's gonna infringe on our contractors in the county. I don't wanna accept material that they would end up hauling off and being paid a fee for. So that's the thing that I asked Greg. I said, if we didn't haul this material off, what's gonna become of it? And he said it'll just stay here.
Has, ever since he's built that barn.
Yeah, so that tells me he's, we're not gonna infringe on, on our contractor and take money away from them that they would make if they haul it off, so.
I appreciate you thinking about that.
I, I don't wanna do that, so. Anyway, once he told me that he was just gonna leave the material there, I told him we'd go ahead and take it, so. That's what we're doing. I want you to be aware of it. So if someone drives by and says, hey, the road, County Road and Bridge Department's hauling off of private gravel, that's why the material was given to us.
What you're doing with that, would you let us know? Cause I think it would be nice if the three of us sign, and you of course, sign a letter of thank you to them.
Sure.
Is that what, eight hundred tons?
No, I'm guessing an estimate is probably four hundred ton anyway.
What's the value of that, if you had to buy it? Just curious.
Oh, I would say-
Runs about thirty a ton, or not about?
No, I know crushed gravel, if we purchase crushed gravel, it runs about seven dollars a ton from Syffords. So if you purchased this, and it's just, it's waste material, so it's, it's three dollars a ton anyway, so. You're looking at probably about twelve hundred dollars worth of material.
Would, would it behoove him to, if, if he made it a donation to the county and then potentially it could be a tax advantage for him doing that?
Uh, that's, above my pay grade, I don't know.
I don't mean to get, I don't mean to get technical, but I mean, I, I appreciate someone stepping up like that. If there's a small benefit for them, I think it would be worthwhile.
Yeah, you know, as a donated item, it, it's possible. Just like, yeah, I mean, it's entirely possible.
Good, that's cool.
Good deal. Nice man.
Yeah, I've got a pile in my house as well, but it's probably only three loads.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, as convenient it is, is what it is, you know, where we're hauling it right now and from, you know, it's stuff that we could do.
And where do you haul that and stockpile it?
We'll take it out here to our gravel pit where they're gonna crush for us.
Don't sell.
Yeah.
Good.
Anytime an individual such as a, a citizen offers anything like that, I'll make you three aware of it so that if someone on the street comes to you and says, hey-
Is it muddy? And how, uh, is it soupy? What kind, what condition?
Oh, no.
It's very dry.
A little dry.
It's probably got seventy. Some, half of it's been grizzed. He's running through a grizzly and it still wouldn't work for what he wanted to use it for. So that's probably got about four, thirty or forty percent rock in it. And that stuff that had been in grizzly has got probably, uh, seventy-five percent rock in it.
I was wondering what the crusher finds or what was left would be useful or just for?
Actually, what's left is, uh, material that we use through our, uh, spreader on our, uh, sander truck for putting-
Throw it on the ice?
Ice erosion. It's real fine material and versus buying salt or whatever, it works real well for that. Provides traction, so.
I had some very positive comments about the work on Willow.
Oh, okay.
And I drove up the last night. It was huge improvement. It was dark, so I really couldn't tell where that experiment started and ended of when I reclaimed. I don't know if it was asphalt or concrete that we put on there a year or two ago, a couple of years ago.
Is this muddy or, or Willow?
Willow. No, I'm sorry, muddy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, where that area was pumping, we put some, some experimental material on there. Well, actually before I came on board and it seemed to be working pretty decent.
Yeah, those people live up there very appreciative of conditions and so.
We're here now on, uh, Copper Gulch and, and Elsie Road.
Copper Gulch is, Copper Gulch is holding up pretty good. We did some work on it just a couple of weeks ago.
And all the pretty guys out there.
Yeah, it's holding up pretty decent. Uh, two fifty-five Oak Creek grade, I'd like to slip out there here in the near future, do some work on it. We've got some spotty blading to do where some washboards are trying to develop. But, uh, I know that we're working on, we did some work on two sixty-four and, uh, towards the end of last week, we've got it in pretty good shape. We finished up on it yesterday. We moved over to two sixty-five. And then we, uh, my Wetmore guys were up here last week and helped us out and they did some work on two seventy-one over here by Bear Basin. And we've got it to move back up, so.
Thanks, then quit hauling?
Uh, I haven't heard of them hauling lately, so they have either tapered off to almost nothing or they're not hauling at all.
Did you have a chance to look at Y Kegel?
Y Kegel.
Uh, when I called you back?
Oh, I did. And what happened was, uh, one of my guys, uh, did some grade work out there and they, uh, pulled the ditches on it and, uh, when they did, typically what happens in a situation like that, when they pull the ditches and use that material to put on the road, after being driven on for two or three days, some of the rocks will come to the surface and that's what happened to that. And he was in the area doing some work again yesterday, so I just had him kind of skimmed several of those off.
Appreciate that.
So.
Okay, excellent. All right, sir, anything else?
Uh, not that I can think of.
Yeah, I wanted to also compliment you on your, uh, financials, your budget, or your, uh, yeah, your financial page. It's nice to get that and be able to keep track. And I see that you did not have February, uh, populated with, uh, your expenses, but I'm assuming when you come in March, then you'll have February done.
Correct, yes.
Good job.
Yeah, looks great. Yeah, that way as we progress through the year, we get down around October, November, just what we talked about, you know, we can get a good snapshot of it and say this is where we're at.
Exactly.
Perfect. Okay. And then I looked at the fuel report as well and you seem to be the guilty person when it comes to using the majority of the fuel. But that's a good thing.
Yeah, that means we're doing something.
Yeah. Yeah.
That report's in gallons, right?
Yeah, twenty-six hundred, twenty-seven hundred sixteen. Yeah, you might just, if a clerical thing, fuel consumption by department or fuel consumption by gallon by department or something, I don't know, if you could just add that in there. Uh, I went on the same assumption. I was pretty sure it was gallons, but it would be nice to-
Is that on the very bottom?
Oh, it does, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 yeah. I did not, uh, notice down there at the bottom of the gallons. Please excuse my comments then. So, yeah, that's nice. That's a very usable graph and, uh...
I guess one thing that I'd almost forgotten about was the mention of the tower out here east of town. When we did meet with BLM, Roger and I, last week, we mentioned to them about the possibility of purchasing that area and they were all for that, but they said their biggest issue right now is personnel. And being able to make a deal like that work, they just don't have the personnel. What they're, and they've had other agencies contact them about purchasing BLM property such as we did. And what they do is they just put us on the list and someday if they ever get the-
What's the March twenty-second date in the meeting?
What they told us was-
Meet you up there?
We wanna, we wanna have a meeting with BLM and anybody that owns property up there at that tower. Because they require that there is a, uh, a list of agencies that own property up there and they want a, uh, they want a, uh, an idea of what property is actually being housed up there and utilized up there. And, uh, that has kind of gone by the wayside over the past and so they're trying to start fresh and figure out who's got what up there. And if there's equipment and property up there that's not being utilized that needs to be gotten rid of and anybody-
You're talking about Hibbs Tower?
Yeah, is that what they call it? I've heard it called three or four different things, the one east of town. But anyway, what they related to us also was if anybody's putting equipment up there and not gotten permission to do so, they could be cited with illegal trespass and they don't wanna do that, so.
By putting equipment up there, you mean putting equipment actually on the towers or at the base of the towers?
Base, like they have the hand outfits sitting there?
They're actually doing both. I think there's been agencies that's gone out there and they've put equipment up on the tower and even on the ground.
Are we leasing that ground currently then or?
Renting it.
Actually-
Bringing it from BLM or, I've never seen any paperwork on that.
There was a lease agreement that I think last time it was signed was in two thousand and sixteen. I got a copy of it.
Do you?
Do you recall how long that lease is? It's days.
It goes on forever.
I think that's what they said too, that it was like a forever lease.
If we're leasing that, then I don't know what BLM's concerned would be, what equipment's on there. That would be our concern, wouldn't it?
It should be, but-
Well, there's other, there are other, you know, smaller towers.
Well, they've actually got agreements, not necessarily only with us, but other companies. Sangre de Cristo Electric, for instance, they've got agreements with them to have equipment up there, not only us. And actually, what they're trying to do is turn the responsibility over us to dictate who puts equipment up there. And then when it comes to the, uh, the list of the equipment that's up there.
So I think we make a good case if we're gonna manage it.
Yeah.
We can collect it.
They want us to turn in the inventory annually on what's up there.
Turn it into them.
Correct. And in fact, Sangre de Cristo Electric would like to give us that hundred-foot tower that they've got up there. As long as we provide room for them to keep their equipment on it.
Got a couple other smaller towers there?
Yeah, we've actually got one up there also, so.
Got one for the, that's repair.
Yes.
Well, the last time I was out there, there were two towers there.
Yeah, the smaller one, the shorter one is ours and then the taller one belongs to Sangre, Sangre de Cristo Electric. And that's the one they'd like to give us.
So we, we just need to see what, what your meeting result is on the twenty-second, then we'll figure out how to meet with them and figure out what kind of, I mean, I don't know why they, you know, we, we got smarts that can come up with, uh, some kind of agreement. They can run through their, uh, headquarters or whoever, jurisdiction or- Uh, we own the road up, which we gotta straighten out too. We got that, uh, Claudia Morris issue. Thinking they own the road, but we gotta resolve the right-ofway on that.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't know that the county does own that road. There is an easement. There's three different easements through there as I understand it, but-
They had one, they signed, Leonard Rice signed it, I guess, for the commissioners back in seventy-six or seventy, whatever it was. Dedicated it as a road, but what, what happened? I don't know.
Well, yeah, and then we get into that whole definition problem and that's, and I think we're gonna have to address that, is what constitutes a road. Uh, who owns the ground underneath the road? And then who's gonna be responsible for maintaining that road?
And BLM's been involved in it also and according to what they told me, they made it sound like the situation's pretty much handled. That, you know, as long as it's BLM property up there, then, you know, the public has to have access to that. And since it's been that way as long as it has, then it, uh, pretty much remains that way, but.
Well, I think it's just a matter of time before Claudia Morris sits in this chair and questions these very things.
She wants to charge.
Concern about that, so.
Charges to be able to-
For an easement to go across her property.
Thinks that she owns that road. I, I don't think she does.
Yes, I think we're gonna have to do some research and find out who does.
I started looking into that a little, but it's, it's gonna take more work to figure out. I, I'm not sure. I, I mean, there's definitely a right-ofway, you know, she may own the dirt, but, you know, there certainly is a right-ofway, but I'm not sure about the ownership.
And I, I thought there was more ownerships involved than just her, but I could be wrong.
As far as property, yeah, even beyond her property, I-
There is, there's one other person up there.
So I think that's looming on the horizon for sure.
Above Silver Cliff Heights, above her place.
Right.
Right.
Is that the same thing as TV Henson?
I'm assuming it is. I don't, I heard that name.
I've, I've heard that band, bandied about, you know?
Yeah, uh, so.
I guess the answer is Clint's gotta get back and see where, where we stand on the legal, cause they can own the ground, but it's a right-ofway through it that-
There's definitely a right-ofway to cross there. She can't charge for it either way. I mean, even if she still owns it, it's a right-ofway. No, she can't block it. Well, I don't know if this is accurate or not, but I know an individual called me and he gave me a heads up that that was her intention was to put a gate.
Sure, that's what she wanted. I, I sat through the first meeting she had with, when she did it with Silver Cliff. Silver Cliff had her take out the pillars that were blocking it.
I see.
And then she did that.
Right.
And, uh, the road was dedicated and the county took it with a resolution, but I don't know what, what that means. Have to get Clint to look at. Have to get Clint to look at it.
Do you, you're having a meeting with BLM on the 22nd? Is that correct?
Uh, without looking at my calendar, I think that's correct, but it's right around that time.
And would you like any of your old commissioners to be there or is it necessary or?
It's not necessary, but if you'd like to be there, that's entirely fine too.
You have a plan on going up with Roger or whoever?
You do? And where's that meeting going to be, do you know?
Up there.
On top of the tower.
Oh, at the tower.
Unless it's snowing, hailing, in which case we'll bring hot dogs in them.
Well, I'd like to probably sit in on that if possible, um.
I think it would be a good idea.
Although I'm committed to be in Pueblo that day, so it doesn't matter.
Try to clean up, uh, who owns what and get the trash out. We got stuff in the shed that's been there for years.
Yeah, thirty or forty years.
Been being abandoned.
Yeah, we have a before-the-wire workshop, before-the-fire workshop in Pueblo that day, so I probably won't know if I can, but you say you're planning on it. So I think that's a good thing. Okay, good. All right, sir, anything else?
Uh, that's all I.
Do you need a couple more phones to pack around or are you good?
If we ever get our cell phone service improved in town, it'll be downgraded to one.
Brenda, you have a question?
Um, do we have, do we need to put it on an agenda to sign that Dola grant? Appropriate for the Hermit Bridge?
Uh, we will, I'm not sure when.
I think they'd like to see it signed pretty soon, wouldn't they?
I think so, yeah.
And, you know, as far as the scheduling of events, you know, if we go ahead and sign it, we'd just need to go ahead and let it out for bids.
We just.
Yeah, let's get it going so everybody can get planned.
Yeah, I don't see any reason.
I would recommend we move forward with it and sign it.
I don't see any reason why not to. I've gone over the agreement.
We got the matching.
About this for a year and a half.
Yeah.
I mean, I have.
On the 30th?
That can be signed at this point in time.
Yeah, we could actually, I mean, if you guys.
You're going to go with that. I'm just concerned about once we sign it, we start the clock and we have to move forward or we'll be.
One's around the time line. If we don't do it pretty soon, it's been hanging out there quite a while.
No, we, you know, we can go ahead and let it out for bids and that's the next step.
You're comfortable with, you're comfortable with moving ahead on it?
Sure.
I don't know if we've done this before, but I'll just go ahead, just to reiterate, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and we sign the grant with Dola for the project on Hermit Road.
I'll second it.
All right, good move to second it to, uh, sign the grant for, with the Department of Local Affairs pertaining to the Hermit Bridge project. Any further discussion?
You want public comment on this?
Uh, it's a good point, thank you, yes. And any public comment concerning that? It does specify in here, uh.
Is it a twelve-month clock?
I think that it has to be completed by, it has to be started by October 1st of this year, the project itself, and then I think the completion date is like May or June of nineteen.
Because if it takes that long, we'll all be running out of town on our rails.
That's right.
That's my thought. I mean, it's time to, it's time to get this done.
Well, I have contractors look at the project, they just.
Couple weeks.
Yes, they.
I can't imagine it anymore.
And the grant does call for a single forty-foot-long, four-sided box cover. So I would guess that we would be committed to that, although I would think Dola would consider other.
Did they write it in or did we?
Well, that was just the information that was presented to them when we did the initial application, but I'm certain that it could be.
I would think so.
Make some modifications.
Recommended to you, we looked into it and this has come up or whatever, I would think they'd be. Thank you. Yeah, good idea. Any further discussion, debate, uh, comments from the public? Nope, but I'm getting ready. Very number, proceed both, all in favor of, uh, signing the grant with Dola for the Hermit Bridge project, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Brenda, do they just want one copy with original signatures on it?
Yes. And we can send you if we want an original signature one back, but they'll send us a photocopy if we don't care.
And we're okay with just having a photocopy. In fact, we could probably make that down.
Yeah, I'll make a copy of it.
If you would, might make the one for, for me.
Look comfortable. Looks fine to me.
Go for it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Still happy with finally moving forward. You've talked about it forever.
It's dozens of times.
I'm just concerned some big heavy trucks could, that's what I'm worried about.
Good, all right, sir, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
For all your work and thanks for your reports. Uh, they're informative and pertinent, they help, thank you.
Hey, Brenda, kind of trouble you do.
Next on the agenda would be the landfill.
Landlord.
And recycle agents.
Sorry to throw that out.
Good.
Morning, sir. Good to see you.
I didn't get the orange memo.
Thank you for coming in.
You and Gary.
Yeah, I kind of messed this one up cleaning that compactor out. What a mess that job was. But we do have it down at Roden Bridge, we got the elevention out and cleaned up and ready, so.
Good. Got to rotate your report here three times.
Yeah, I just did that.
We don't know why that comes out that way.
Not me, man, I just grabbed it and there it was.
And I think we actually had a hard coffee too in this, yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Brenda.
Yes.
So we're a little ahead of where we were last year as far as revenue.
Yeah.
Only twenty-four thousand right now, last year was. So we're a little bit ahead. That always helps. Second pages last year, so.
Without, um, I think I mentioned to you that I invited Beth Lentz from Arkansas, our council of governors.
Oh, yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah, she's going to come tomorrow. I tried to get her to come today, unfortunately didn't work.
What's on her mind?
She's money. I went to a meeting and she said that whenever she and her family go on vacation, they have to go check out the landfill. She lives, eats and brings landfills. But what, what our Arkansas could do is she could help us get money.
Oh.
Grants and stuff like that. So, um, I, I thought it'd be a good idea if we can get all together and just kind of start discussing.
Sure.
Annexing property and what it costs or get the permits, date for it.
This is, she's, that's her deal. Yeah, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, she's pretty sure.
I hope you don't mind me doing that. I, I don't want to go behind your back, but I was.
No, that's, that's fine. Cause I know, I know Beth, so that's all good. She comes out to the landfill and does trash audits, which is pretty interesting.
I was going to get all official and write a letter to you and your crew, it didn't happen, but I wanted to express my appreciation and I think I can speak for the other commissioners about, number one, the appearance of the landfill. Man, we were out there on that site tour and I remember in the old days, you could see trash blowing all over that place and across the road and into the fences and I just did not see any of that and I was very impressed. I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
For how that looks out there.
It does happen, you know, but.
Apparently you mitigate it when it does because, uh.
Get it picked up, right.
I just thought the, the whole place looked great, it was clean, well organized and.
You need to buy that property right across from you, because you claimed that you're building, never.
Across, across Rosita Road.
Yeah, if scrap steel price ever came back, that would be.
Right.
But, uh, yeah, I just wanted to compliment you and please pass it on to your employees out there because.
Be good for them to hear.
Yeah, it looked good, looked really good. The equipment looked good, it was clean and, uh, I just thought that was.
Yeah.
Outstanding, so.
What do you need that we're not providing for you? How can we help you do your job better?
I think we're actually in pretty good shape. When Roden Bridge gets their back, when we get that other backhoe out there, that's going to help too. Just having another bucket out there, even though it's small, at least we could probably go run through, uh, some griz material with it.
Did it four-wheel drive?
No.
No. Be careful.
Two-wheel drive, yeah. But it'll help.
Yeah, absolutely, we're good.
For sure. I don't know when they're getting their backhoe, do we know?
I haven't heard and I didn't ask this morning, so I don't know what the plan is there. I was remiss in that. And you get your tires through Roden Bridge?
Actually just got them through GCR, the same place that Roden Bridge gets their tires. So that's all taken care of. Transmission for the loaders all taken care of, the engine for the compactors getting installed, so we are gaining.
Good, excellent, okay. That's super.
That's about all I have for today though, so.
Well, I get a question.
Oh, and cardboard is a hundred dollars a ton, so that's down quite a bit. We have enough bales for a load. I hate to see it go down any farther, the price, so we might go ahead and get a truck and get a load shipped out.
Good, you got enough to make a load?
Yeah.
Looked like it.
Yeah, cause we, you know, depending on the trailer, we'll put between forty-six and fifty bales on, so.
So while we have a second, one of those questions kind of bugged me a little bit. We keep the bales outside, it rains once a year, however, not very often, but when it does, the cardboard gets a little wet. Is that to our advantage, because do we sell it for more money? Cause they're heavier?
I always thought, I always thought, yeah, let it rain because we'll, we'll gain on that a little bit, but no, it doesn't.
Okay.
As you go, we've had, uh, after a big, even last summer when we had all that rain and we had a load go out, and so we brought it over to the scales and weighed it, we had to come, have him go back to the landfill and kick four bales off because it was too heavy.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, not much to our advantage, but.
Walking around the other day, I was looking at that going, we could make some money if we wait till it rains real hard.
Yeah.
Okay, just a second.
Okay, anything else, sir?
I don't think so.
He's got new shoes.
Uh, that's what I was going to ask, how do you keep your boots looking so good working?
Hey, man, I was just a big R yesterday, buddy.
Okay. Another day and they aren't going to look that good.
And I didn't pay attention, do you have fuel tank out there at the landfill?
Diesel, yeah. Thousand-gallon diesel tank and a five-hundred gas tank.
Sitting out there right by the gate going to the brush pile where they.
And RB, Roden Bridge hauls for you?
Fuel?
Where you buy that directly?
Yeah, we buy it from McFarland Fuel in, uh, Salida. Always have, they were close and. Actually, we had Chris Hager doing that when he had his truck at one point and then that kind of stopped, so then we went with McFarland Fuel on Salida.
Are we, uh, I'm just asking so I can know, are we putting out for bids fuel and tires for you guys?
Roden Bridge does, I'm sure, for tires and fuel. And, um, we've just always used McFarland.
The same.
Yeah, from Salida.
So Roden Bridge doesn't use them, they, they don't come up?
Yeah, they actually use them for their pit too.
So they'd make a trip, fill both tanks.
Yeah.
How many gallons? That's a five-hundred gallon, is that what it was?
Diesel is thousand.
Or a thousand, that's what it'd be.
Yeah, gas is a five-hundred gallon tank. Which I don't ever fill it up because it wouldn't get used and go bad the way fuel is these days for gasoline, pretty bad, so it don't last long like it used to.
Yeah, I had a citizen ask me if we were buying fuel and tires on bids. So I wonder if that's something we can look at.
Yeah. You know, I don't know who else comes up with fuel unless it's Acorn maybe.
JR, yeah, Acorn used to.
Yeah.
I haven't seen him up there.
They have a small truck that they come around and fill. I don't know who the ranchers around use anymore really. I think a lot of them use McFarland, but I don't know if anybody else.
Our local gas stations don't have the ability to bid and deliver.
Right, because nobody has a truck anymore up here. Be a good business for somebody, actually.
All right, sir, thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
Good to see you.
You guys have a good rest of the day.
We'll do it.
See you, Monja, thanks.
You got it, Justin.
Um. Brenda, we have Dawn on standby, correct? I, I just, hear me out before you call her, please. Uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to just take a couple minute break and then can we roll her below extension or do you think she's?
I don't think she cares, just call her.
Can we just take a few minute recess, please? Call the meeting back to order. Uh, we'll proceed with our agenda. Uh, we're going to roll HR and finance down, so we would like to welcome our new extension director, Ms. Shannon Off, for her very first report ever. And no bid overall today?
No, it's not that call today.
We do have a tradition that the first time you're here, you bring the donuts, but you forgot.
I don't even know where to get donuts around here.
You know?
And I, have you officially met?
I just introduced myself.
We just all met.
Okay, you did, okay.
We did.
And Bill as well, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, yeah, welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for giving us that report, uh, ahead of time. I'll pull my copy up real quick.
Um, I did change one thing on that, just the date for that special fair board meeting.
Uh, yes, okay. Uh, and can we just talk about that real quick?
Sure.
I need to get it on the record if you don't mind.
Yes.
Let me see, I don't see that.
That's the second bullet from the bottom on that first list of fair board slash 4H items.
It's not March 26th?
It's not March 26th, that's the regular fair board meeting. Um, so we're, they scheduled a special fair board meeting on March 19th for Bill Baker so he can address his concerns.
So we just scratched 26?
Yes.
And slide in the nineteenth. So, um, Diane Rose contacted me and asked me if I would mediate that meeting, and I told her that I would. So it is on March nineteenth at the Silver Cliff Town Hall at five-thirty in the evening, so. For you gentlemen's information, I perceive that to be setting some minimal rules of discussion and debate and and requesting that people adhere to that would be my role as I look at that. Started doing some research and putting together some information for that meeting, so I'll report back to you about that. Thank you.
Um, okay, so the Fair Entry software is an online program that's used to register the indoor projects and the livestock. And the fair board was concerned because of the large cost to such a small county, because it would have been three hundred dollars for us to register and use that software. But I spoke to my mentoring Extension Agent and CSU, who both confirmed that we are not required, though the language says it's mandatory. That's a little loose. So we only, we can use it to register the indoor projects and for any livestock going to the state fair, but that does not require any payment. The surrounding counties said that you really have to have great Wi-Fi service at your fairgrounds to be able to use it, which my understanding is we don't. So. Good news. We don't have to worry about that.
And under what the rules of engagement are we not required to use that Fair Entry software? Because we're a small county, because we don't have great Wi-Fi? How did they determine that we're not gonna be required to use it?
Both.
Okay.
So Mark Platten in Teller County is in a similar situation, and he said they don't have very good Wi-Fi. They're not a very large county, and both of those reasons qualified them to not have to pay for it.
Okay.
So how do you give it to them? Hard copy somehow? How do they get entered?
We can still use it to enter them. We can enter them here before we ever go over, or we can enter it when we come back from the fair.
And then submit it?
And then we just submit it. So we can still submit everything online. It just doesn't require payment.
Got it.
Um, that's cool. Yes.
So that's that. The rulebook for the fair for twenty-eighteen, the first draft is done. We reviewed that a little bit in the fair board meeting last month. I put that together and I'm working on the second draft with the edits that were given to me. And then everyone's supposed to be working on some edits, so they'll be giving me a second copy at the fair board meeting on the twenty-sixth, so we'll get that done. Most of the things in there are the same, just some of the 4H updates on the different projects. And of course, the dates and the times, anything that's changed there for the judges and so on and so forth there. But in terms of any policy changes, we updated the Code of Conduct wording, and then they also requested that I come up with an anti-cyberbullying policy, so I wrote that up, and they're reviewing that, but I have a copy if if you guys want a copy of that. Leah Coleman asked me to change the wording so that this clearly applies to 4H and FFA, and then the Code of Conduct is being signed by all participants, their parents, and the volunteers at the fair. So this will be too, and this will be in the fair book. The fair board's trying to decide if they want this to be passed out separately and have it signed, or if having it in the fair book is enough. My personal opinion is to get this signed because there's nothing to sign in the fair book, just to make sure, just. And then this would be amended into the future Code of Conduct for use next season and next year. What's that?
Who invented that?
The cyberbullying policy. I took it from other 4H websites and the CSU page, and I just put it together.
Cool.
So I have that.
Personally agree with you, just I'm concurring that I like the idea of the participants signing it. That way, they can't say, oh, I didn't see it.
Right.
They'll, it's more accountable to them, so I concur with you.
Okay. Yeah, I know it's a pain to have another form signed, but
That's fine.
if nothing else, we can get them at registration.
Great.
So that's that, and I'll leave a copy with you also for that. Thank you. Um, let's see. Capital improvements. We talked about that at the fair board meeting because there are some problems with the buildings over at the fairgrounds. I was told that there were issues with the pigs getting out and some leaks, so Cheryl Laramore is heading up Subcommittee for Capital Improvements, trying to determine what grants were eligible for to see what we might be able to get. There was a little confusion because of the Saddle Club ownership versus county ownership, and when we looked at the property lines, it appeared that part of the livestock buildings were on county property instead of Saddle Club property. But when I went to the assessor's office, we're not sure that that's the case because that's not the wording in the paperwork. So I relate that to Cheryl so that she can look at the specific grants that we might be eligible for.
I spoke to JD about that as well. He's comfortable with those buildings being on the property. He's more comfortable with the actual buildings being where they're supposed to than what the map really shows.
Yeah, they said that the lines were just stretched a little bit, so they're not a hundred percent accurate when you look at them, but the paperwork is. We had the project fair over at the school on the twenty-seventh of February, and I think it was a huge success. We had eight new enrollments right then and there at the fair. And then we had an additional five come in between the twenty-seventh and the first. And so with the, we had, I think, about sixty-nine participants signed up before the fair and eighty-three afterwards, so I mean, it's almost nineteen percent increase in a few days. So I thought that was pretty amazing. And Brianna, or Brianna, she headed that up, so she wants to make that an annual event, so she's gonna pitch that to the fair board.
How many different kinds of projects were there?
How many different kinds?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, a few dozen.
Thirty, forty, ten?
I'd say a couple dozen.
That's good.
They were signing up for all areas. We had all kinds of kids coming in gung-ho to go get a steer, and we had to, you know, explain to them that we're a little past that due date, so we were encouraging them to start small or start with some of their other interests, like the indoor projects, things that they, we knew that they could succeed in this year without too much too much of an undertaking on their or their parents' parts.
Well, the paper shows that a steer sold for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Everybody wants to put a steer in.
Yeah, we had a few, I think a few new families to the county and a couple little girls. They just said, we really wanna show a cow. And I said, I know, and so we walked through everything, and I think we got them signed up for photography or cake decorating, something else they really liked. So there's that, and then.
Get a steer, I'll decorate a cake.
Yeah, there you go. Make a steer cake. I don't know. And and then another thing we're gonna push, I didn't actually put on this report, but Brianna and I were talking about the open division and trying to get more of the community involved in participating and entering their projects, so she's gonna pitch that to the fair board, too. I helped her with the flyer for that. So hopefully, we'll get a lot of people of all ages come in and showing off their own photography or cakes or whatever else they are interested in. Let's see. All right, so we already talked about March nineteenth.
Yeah, and let me just throw in, that is a special, they call that as a special meeting. It's not their regular board meeting on the nineteenth.
Uh, let's see. We had the MQA and PQA certifications on the first. Over at the Saddle Club, we had thirty-eight kids attend that with their parents. It went really well. The guys from Bloomington? Burlington? Burlington? Burlington. They were great. Their displays were pretty awesome. And they put on a good little show for the kids with the injection demonstrations. But all the kids passed. They did really well, and I think they had a pretty good time, too. That's that. Parents were there. They were very supportive, going around with the kids and helping out. And all of us got involved, myself, Diana. We jumped right in, helping them find answers.
And can you tell us MQA and PQA, please?
Meet Quality Assurance and Port Quality Assurance, which is required for any participant showing livestock, any type of livestock now. Um, all right. I think I already mentioned the Code of Conduct. So that exists. The wording in the Code of Conduct that we have upstairs says for 4H. But again, I talked to Leah Coleman, who's the FFA Advisor Ag Teacher over at the school, and she asked me to go ahead and amend it so that we have one form we can pass out to everyone. It looks the same. They've seen it before. And again, that would apply to volunteers and parents as well. So we're updating that. We'll get this approval for cyberbullying at the end of this month, and we'll have a whole new Code of Conduct.
And by volunteers, you're including leaders, superintendents?
Everyone.
Commissioners?
We're not done with that yet.
Okay, excellent.
Let's see. So just a few other things that don't apply to those categories, I guess. I'm still trying to plan, like, meet your Extension Agent or teacher Extension Agent about Custer County. I'm trying to get that together here in the next couple of weeks. So as soon as I do, I'll update you. I'll probably ask for a little bit of guidance there. And that way, we can get that out. I know that Tracy Ballard asked me to update her. So we'll get that out there, and hopefully, we can get a lot of people in. I know a lot of people are a little apprehensive to come in. Who's this new girl? What's going on? People have been kind of coming in gradually, but this way, hopefully, we can get everyone together. And I can get to know a lot of the community as well and see what their involvement is.
Maybe an open house down at the Bowlin Alley or something like that would be appropriate.
Just make sure both papers.
Yeah, it used to matter of getting it out into the papers and getting the word put out. I think it would, I think
It's a good idea.
We'd have good response to that, so I'll certainly work with you.
Okay.
You will be expected to dress up, though.
This is Custer.
If my stuff ever gets here from Virginia, I promise you I will. They got me to buy tickets to that dance on Friday, and I said, well, I hope I have something to wear, and the kids all told me, you can come in your overalls. It's okay.
We all wear jeans. Please don't dress up. You'll make us all look bad.
This is the only time to see ties. We used to not wear ties either, but I'm not blaming anybody.
Oh, that's nice to know.
I'm definitely not a big fan of dressing up myself, but every time I do, I just get dirty.
All the shanty stuff is still on the truck or in storage.
Yes.
So been here almost two weeks and still waiting.
I've been here twenty-one days and.
Are we treating you okay?
Oh, yeah. Not having any issues here, just with my, everything getting here from the other side of the country.
We can't put our hands in, but anything else, you know, we'll punch them if we need to.
Appreciate it. Let's see. The Extension Advisory Committee. I had put on here that we need to discuss that. Tom and I have already talked about it a little bit. Just trying to get contact, points of contact and information. So Carol Custer's been helping me a lot with that. So I've contacted all the members, told them that I'm ready to get this up and running again. Trying to gauge who still wants to participate, who's still in the area, et cetera, so I've got some bylaws and last meeting minutes that I'm reviewing, and so by the end of the week, I should have a date set up to get that up and going. Also want to, or going to be working on discussing a new youth foundation program, getting that set up. I don't really have any other information about that, except it's on my to-do list. And then need to get the Weed Advisory Board up and running. And I need contact information for all of the members. I think I've got four, but I'm missing five.
Can you, I think I've got a couple more to give you, but can, while I'm doing that, can you talk to us about your conversation with Mr. Nobles concerning the Weed Advisory Board?
Yes. I did reach out to Bill Nobles from CSU, and I asked him about whether or not the Weed Advisory Board can be under me, or if I can serve on that board. Or be a voting member. I also asked him those questions in relation to the fair board. So he did reply back and told me that I should not be a voting member on the fair board or on the weed board, but that I can be an ex officio member. So it appears.
You can give advice.
Mm-hmm. And I can make requests. So what that means is that we do need to find a weed director for the county, and we need to get the Advisory Board back up and running. I did reach out to Nick Bankstrom, I believe is his name, who is the new advisor for, or the new weed director for I can't remember. He's Fremont County. I think he's Fremont.
Yeah.
But he said he has too much on his plate. He'd be happy to offer advice when needed, but he could not come and serve full-time on any board here, so we need to look into that.
Yeah, I did get your email pertaining to that, so I'll follow up with that a little bit.
Okay.
Jeff Boothier
I have.
representing the Forest Service?
Yes.
Would like to be moved to a ex officio member.
Okay.
He's been put on another weed board for two hundred counties.
Okay.
And I told you Roger Gregg will continue to serve on that.
Yes.
So I'll continue to work on helping you get the contact information for the rest of those people.
Okay, and then I think I have Bill Donley and Dick Downey's contact information from this list, but I'm just missing the rest, but you have that list. So we can get that going.
Okay, good.
And then the only other thing I have that isn't on my report, I had two members of the community come speak with me yesterday, and one of whom is very sensitive to the pesticides and any spraying that goes on. So she asked me if I could continue to keep her updated on when those things would be taking place, so she can adjust her schedule. I just don't know who I would contact, so if you all.
What does that mean, just around her place? She doesn't wanna be?
Anywhere in the county.
Because she's allergic.
She has a delayed reaction. Is highly allergic.
Roger Squires on the board, the Weed Advice Report, and Roden Bridge does that, so
Okay.
the request probably should go through Roger to Roden Bridge.
Thanks for being sensitive to that.
I think she had that requested in previous, like past years.
She did. She said that she was informed in the past from the Extension Agent.
Okay.
So I told her that I would make sure we, we got her that information.
You have contact information?
For Roger?
For the lady?
I do have hers, yes. So if you'd like me to reach out to him, I'm happy to do so, if you just send me his information and then I can.
Three-seven-one, twenty-six, twenty-eight.
Three-seven-one, twenty-six, twenty-eight? And that's seven-one-nine? Here you go.
That's a cell.
Yeah, I'll get you that and your mail address.
Okay. Perfect.
Very good.
And that's all I have.
All right.
I got a general question, just for thinking ahead kind of stuff, thinking about. A little history on the West Cliff Stampede. Goes back, got into the forties, and actually, my grandfather and my uncle started horse racing. They were horse racing before that, back in the nineteen oh-nines. But they started this as a thing to get people going, and quarterhorse racing was a big deal. Then we had a racetrack, which is still sort of in existence around the existing place right now. But it evolved from that, and they were instrumental in the saddle, starting the Saddle Club. And then they were instrumental in bringing in the rodeo. And so that evolved with time, and through the fifties and sixties, it was really, the event was the rodeo. And then the 4H and the livestock show kind of migrated into it. And then we've become a true fair, but it lacks a lot of, you know, and we see a lot of people wanting to do more with other kinds of things like you're doing with projects. All kinds of 4H projects need to be exhibited, and so we, you know, an exhibit hall that would be a big barn for other things would be a neat thing. It's a strategic plan. I know you're an advisory thing, but we need to think about fair board and how it evolves. And why aren't we having other things that get people all excited about a county fair? You know? Rides, what, why can't we get a carnival outfit coming once in a while? You know, put it, instead of having to be a pure, to be a livestock show and a rodeo only. It would help get better PR, and we're evolving as a, you know, a lot of things to draw people in. And that's one of the big draws in the valley is this rodeo and the livestock show, but it's much more than that. It would be fun to get everybody more involved.
So are you thinking like a country fair along with?
A regular fair.
That's a really good idea. We had, we had a one come through county fair, and it, there were some issues, but I mean, if we do it properly, I.
Well, sure, you get, and you get to make sure they're the good kind, you know, and that's kind of fun stuff for little kids to come to instead of just watching a steer get auctioned off.
Booths for crafters?
Crafts, booths.
That'd be great.
Uh, you know, shooting sports stuff, you know, lots of neat things we could do and make it a real county fair.
And the Saddle Club has developed that whole vendor area on their side of the property, but people welcome to go back and forth.
It's funny you mention that. I was thinking that on the way in this morning, and I was thinking, I said, the county fairs that I'm used to, and I think about my head. Because they do have a lot of similarities, but they also have that carnival aspect. They have the craft exhibitors or vendor booths and.
Wouldn't take much of three-sided, or just a roof over something to start with for exhibits, something to protect it from the wind, because no matter when we have this rodeo, it rains and it blows. Doesn't matter what day you pick.
Good. Anything else, ma'am, to suggest?
Um, I think that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Are you commuting from Hartsel?
Hartsel?
Yes.
Daily?
As of yesterday.
That's eighty miles one way, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
You got a place in Hartsel? I thought you were going to Salida.
Um, that's where my fiance is working. He's in Salida. We bought a place up in Hartsel.
You have to shake my hand, too.
Um, we were staying with Sarah Shields in town for a while. We had some issues with our house when we first got here. But I know, everyone thinks I'm crazy.
Well, that's.
But let, let me assure you, it's nothing compared to the commute in Virginia. I live ten miles from work, and it took me two hours to get there. So at least this is a nice, calm, scenic drive.
If they aren't gonna close that road when you have a half inch of snow like they do in Northern Virginia.
Well, right. And the, my first two days, we did have some snow up in Hartsel, and I thought, you know what? I think tomorrow I'll try going the long way through Salida to come in, and ended up not having to. It's just Route Nine that seems to be a problem.
They don't plow that from, what, seven p.m. to five a.m.?
All right, Phil, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yep. Next on our agenda is. Next on our agenda is HR and Finance. Thank you ma'am for coming back again.
I just locked John back in.
Hello, HR.
On there, how are you?
How are you this morning?
I wore a tie again, my goodness.
Yeah, and, uh, once I go through my rough, it'll take another week then.
Once it trends, uh.
And I just have really nothing. Nothing's changed, nothing's new, and I'm still working on balancing out.
How's your workload? Do you, do you, do you, are you, uh, overworked?
So now you're trying to fire me again like the last time we talked?
I'm trying to get your help if you need help, that's all I'm saying. I don't want you to.
No, Brenda helps with the data entry and the other things. And, you know, it's, it is what it is.
Okay, um.
I, I, I don't know what you're asking me.
I'm asking you if you're overworked and if, and if some additional help would help you.
I am not overworked.
Thank you.
Some days it is overwhelming because the timing issues, but the re- I mean, that's where the problem comes in. That's, it's not that there's on there.
Health, safety and welfare.
I have an HR issue to discuss while she's here, cause I just got, did you get this, a copy of this from Civil Rights Division? Uh, the gentleman who files complaints against us.
That's a shot.
Yeah, no, this is the one, the last one has been denied to get, and I'm gonna give it to you, cause you need to keep it in your records. I'm not gonna mention the name, obviously.
And I'll make a copy and send it to, uh, CTSI.
Right. And if the commissioners wanna see that, they should get a copy. I just opened it just now. Yeah, you, you know which one we're talking.
I'm fine.
Yeah, if you would force a copy of that, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, I do not have any questions or concerns, Bill. Okay, very good.
Looks good. Sounds good.
I'll go and unlock John out of cell one. Cause I literally lock him in.
I was really just trying to help you.
It's all in the timing.
I guess.
Uh, that leaves us with Human Services. Um, did you call over Brenda or?
No, not.
And while we're waiting, uh, we'll make introductions. You're Christine.
I am.
Danley. Uh, my name is Tom Flower. Commissioner, Jay Prince, Commissioner and Bill Candace, our Commissioners. So, uh, obviously Christine is with the CTSI Insurance Pool and she's asked to be on the agenda, so we'll, we have one more item on our, uh, staff. Reports to go through and so we can, uh, we'll take care of that and then we'll move to you.
Okay.
That's all right. And you drove down this morning?
I did.
From Denver?
I did.
How was it?
It was not bad.
Good. No big traffic snarls or?
No.
You starting the south end of Denver or the north end?
Uh, south.
That's a benefit.
Uh, you've been here before?
I have.
I remember.
Hello, gentlemen, how are you?
Top of the morning.
Top of the morning. I raced today, are we or something, top of the morning? Not being over here.
They just can't see me. I'm hiding.
You know, that is a nice tie. Is it new?
No.
It's only one.
It was one Egyptian exhibit was up in Denver years ago, so it's got little sphinxes all over.
Oh, is that right? Oh, yeah, I see that now. Wow, that is pretty good.
Well, you quit making a big deal about his tie, because it's, it's gonna be hard to remember.
Well, my daughter got married. I bought new ties for all my boys, cause they were in the wedding. And somewhere along the line, I lost a tie. I still don't know what happened to that tie. They all tell me they don't have it, so, I don't know, but whatever. Okay, guys, I just have this wonderful report as usual, which I am. And who are you? And who are you? Well, it's nice to meet you, Mark. Anyhow, I'm working on doing something with the front page since this thing's such a big.
Did you find it?
Thing. And, but we're working on it and so we weren't done, so we'll just, next month, hopefully, we're gonna have something more simpler, okay? But since it's the beginning of the year, there's nothing out of the ordinary, because this starts January and we just started with every budget thing, so there's nothing.
So you're tracking is what you're saying?
We're tracking. We're good. There's no, absolutely no issue there at all.
Before you move on.
Uh-huh.
I'm trying to get my head around, tan if I got that.
Okay.
Uh, I'm a little confused about A and D.
A to the needy disabled.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything else? And we would put that in, I don't know. I would try to write all that out, but I don't know if we have enough room for it.
O A P was my other one.
Old age pension.
Okay.
You have to be.
I can't believe we're still using those words.
I, yeah.
Old age pension.
Old age pension, that's, that is true. That's just what it's called. That is true. See, we're just, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
We're just using the acronym there, but yeah, we still are. That's what it's been forever, but yet.
And C S B G.
Community Service Block Grant.
Oh, yeah, the block grant, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and then Medicaid Transportation and then Energy Outreach Colorado, Z E O C. Okay? All right. And then the next page is the state allocations. And that is something that I, I, if I can get my report from the state in time, I wanna update this report too. So I'm gonna see how that goes, okay?
So daycare's eight and a half percent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and that's why I don't like this right now, because it doesn't track, it just tracks how many expenditures we have that month for a provider or whatever, but it doesn't track, all of the expenditures are charged off to that. And I don't get that report in time to put it on here. So that's my issue with this report.
Is the monthly expenditure for daycare really four hundred and seven thousand dollars?
No, that's the.
He didn't get.
Oh, you didn't get the new one?
Probably did.
You didn't get the new one, yes.
Did you send that?
Okay.
I'm sure you did. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, no.
I didn't open the right one.
All right, no, I, we apologize because I didn't even made it out there. It was, uh, we were working on this thing and that was the, that was December's. But it got, mm, cause we were messing with it and sent it out and, and Tom brought that into me and he said, yeah, he goes, what the heck? No, and I said, what the heck? And we, we looked at it and we're going, oh, okay, cause we were messing with this allocation. But no, here, this is exact, this is what it is.
Okay, now that makes sense.
That makes sense, doesn't it? Yes.
This is this?
Yeah, that's the correct one, one fifty-five thirty-eight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, all right. All right, yeah, no, it wasn't that much. That would've been, that would've been something, wouldn't it?
I thought you built a daycare.
Instead or whatever. Yes.
I didn't know what happened.
Yeah. He brought that into me and I'm like, what?
That's my fault for not catching.
Yeah, well, no, I, I didn't. And when, when Ron sends them out, sometimes it just got, that got sent instead of this and that was all messed up. But anyhow. And then the Community Service Block Grant, we're supposed to get more money. That's the next one I have. I don't know how you have guys have.
They're out of order.
Yeah. See, I don't know how you get them and so it makes it complicated. You know what? You should tell me how you have them and then I could go there.
Well, I got T F A B yet.
Okay. T F A B is just what, the amount of product that we, we have coming in and dispersing of it. We got eggs last time, which was wonderful. We haven't had eggs or anything like that for a while, so that was good. Okay, and then what do you got? You got?
Well.
Do you, do you got the food assistance snap? And that just shows how many households we had in the month of January. Yeah, and how much in the dollar amount that was processed in that. Okay. And then, do you have, what do you have? Energy Outreach or C S B G?
Energy Outreach.
Okay. Energy Outreach. Just shows how many payments and, you know, there's no county dollars attached to that at all. It just passes through, but we're still doing the work. We have to process it, take debt, process it, so, but.
So we're forty-three percent expended on that line item.
Right, right.
Second, well, actually, this doesn't, does this include February or not?
No, this is just through January. Yeah, and that's because.
That's October through January.
Yeah, it runs, it, that's a weird, yeah, cause it's just an energy to help through the winter type thing, but it runs through September, so. We've had quite a few actually, even though they have weeks, sometimes it's leaving them short and. Yeah, it's gonna mess with you. Just can't be normal stuff. And Community Service Block Grant, we didn't have any payments in January. We've had some in February. And they're telling, they're keep telling me that we're gonna get more money, cause that's not a whole lot of money. No, it's not. And she says that we're gonna get more, but we haven't seen it yet, so.
And what, typically, what kind of things would that pay for?
It pays for emergency things. We use it for rent. We can use it for utilities. We can use it for dental, uh, prescriptions. We've also used it to, uh, help with appliances, hot water heaters that have gone out. So we just call, it's called emergency services and I think that's about all that we use it for.
You wouldn't use it for services covered by the programs such as daycare?
No, no, cause we have that coverage and they don't consider that an emergency service anyhow, yeah. We've had to use it for prescriptions. Somebody, um, could not afford their meds, they're not on Medicaid, and Medicare hadn't kicked in and so we used it for that. And, uh, dental is something that we're seeing, because dental's one of those things that there's not. If, now, they've opened that up a little bit with, when Obamacare came in and so adults can get some help with dental, but you have to be eligible for Medicaid and some of them are not. And so we've, we use that, you know, five, six times just for dental. And I've got an application right now out for that and I'm working with the dentist on that, cause we have a cap of how much we can do. And sometimes it's really easy. I had, we helped this guy, oh God, probably a couple of months ago. He had to have a couple of teeth pulled and he brought me in a nice little thank you card thanking me for helping him get that taken care of, which was really nice. Now he came in and brought that in. He did one of these things, he came in and just kinda threw it at me. But I thought that was really nice that he went the extra mile to do that, you know? So, okay. Any questions on that right now? It's pretty straightforward.
I'm gonna ask you that question I ask every, you know the question.
I know the question. I do.
Anything unusual, out of place?
No.
Anything that we can do to make it better?
No, no, we're just, uh, gearing up. We're gonna, electronic data, electronic data management system's gonna be coming on board. They're gonna train us on that, how I report to the state on, on our salaries. They're changing that, so we're new training on that. We're just doing a lot of training and stuff, but that's just how that goes, so. But no, I don't have anything out of the ordinary or anything right now. Haven't heard anything on some of the stuff that's in legislation on updating the grants and our, not updating, but increasing the grants. Still haven't heard anything on that. They did a webinar. They ask our opinion. We tell them, um, pretty much, they just did the webinar to tell us why they thought, why, to explain why they were going to do this. Even though they asked us for our input, when we gave it to them, they were pretty much like, well, this is why, this is why we're doing it. So it's like, okay, I don't even know why you bothered to ask us then, but that's how, that's, that's how that goes, you know? But anyhow, so I haven't heard anything on that yet, so we will see. They were gonna change out the way the daycare, um, daycare right now has, uh, daycare providers have a point-of-sale device, P O S. And the providers or their parents have a card and they help to swipe the kids in and out. That was supposed to go away and they were gonna do something else and that was gonna happen in November. The system wasn't ready and so they postponed it. It was supposed to happen in the middle of this month. They've already postponed it again. Which is good, because the system is not ready. Police do not bring up systems who are, which they're having problems. Cause when they brought up our, our system that we do all of our programs on, it was not ready and we had a big mess. So, but anyhow, they're postponing that, so I'm glad they learned something from past problems with that, so. But that's where we're at, so.
How's your staffing?
Okay, okay. Doing, we got, Stacy's doing all kinds.
Report.
Stacy's doing all kinds of training. She's in training right now. She had to, uh, this one we got to do at our office. Uh, hooked it up to the computer, got, we didn't have a camera, so they sent us a camera, got Vernon to hook it up for us. And so she's doing that today, so she's in Linda's office all day, so Linda took a vacation day, so she's just not sitting here twiddling her thumbs, so. So that's going, so, yep, we're doing okay. Okay.
And is targeted retirement?
At the end of May.
End of May?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Oh, I expect to see a nice tie next year. Well, I give you the one in my voice, but I can't find it, you know, so there you go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll see you later. You've done a great job, I just want you to know.
Uh, we'll move on to old business. Commissioner Prince, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Um, a, a few sessions ago, I s- I asked about, maybe asked Mr. Reinhart on a, uh, as-needed basis, go down to one more to change a ceiling tile or minimal types of maintenance things. I don't expect him to do air conditioning, that kinda thing. And we had just said that we would discuss that further, so when I was down there speaking with them, they asked how that was coming. I told them I'd bring it back up. So, um, I, I would like to, uh, request that, um, we allow, um, Ed to go down there. And, you know, if he feels it's something beyond his capability, I'm just perfectly fine with that. I'm certainly not trying to make him into an H V A C man. But some of the small things, you know, they're complaining about things that come on glue and they have to glue back in and stuff like that. And I said, you know, there, there are not a lot of young people on that board, if you know what I mean. So they're not interested in getting on their hands and knees and doing that. So I just wanted to bring that back up, cause I didn't want it to die and I did promise the folks down there that, um, we would do that.
Okay, yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable. I guess my first question or concern would be, uh, frequency, you know, I don't think they need him running down there every third or fourth day to address a single issue, but if we could say.
What I thought we would do is get, you know, as needed, you know, make three or four items and he can go down for a couple of hours and handle a couple of minor change of light bulbs and things like that. So if you're okay with that and if Ed's okay with that, I mean, I feel it'd be appropriate to ream, if he uses his own vehicle, obviously, to reimburse him for the mileage. Uh, but if you're okay with that, I'd like to tell them, give them the form. I mean, I'm familiar with it and say, you know, would you guys, uh, you know, fill it out, wait to get several items, see if he doesn't then make multiple trips. And, uh, give them a call when you're ready. If that's okay with you guys.
Is there any, has there anybody ever been down there, Jay, that lives down there that has helped them do that kinda stuff, might be easier?
You know, there, there are. For example, Nan's husband, and I wish I could think of his name, he's, he's probably in his early forties and he's.
Courtney, yeah.
Thank you, Courtney. Really wonderful young man. He hung the banner and does a lot of stuff. But, I mean, it's, it's a volunteer type thing and I told him, I said, volunteers are wonderful, but if something needs to get done, you know, it's not fair to continuously just keep hitting the, uh, volunteers. So I don't know, he's been doing a lot of it.
I was just wondering, you know, if it's gonna cost whatever X dollars it is to go up and down and then.
Right.
And then, uh, time on Ed here, it's just, maybe there's a cost wash and it'd be simpler.
Well, you know.
I don't know, I just, I don't know.
You know, if you would entertain, maybe I could ask, uh, Courtney if he'd be interested in, you know, maybe putting in an expense account of under ten, at ten dollars an hour or something, whatever he guys, if reasonable, we can reimburse him for doing that and then we won't have to use that. Because I agree with you, it's a, it's an isolated community that we're responsible for and it has, there's an issue with that at any time.
And then, that's right, some, you know, we got sink flooding here at the same time it's going down there, you know?
I mean, just keep it simple. I think your point's well taken. I don't have a problem with that if you don't.
Yeah, I think either one would work. I, I certainly agree with the fact that we need to be reminded that that is our responsibility, just like any other building up here would be, so, uh, if we have to.
That's a county, not a valley.
If we have to budget for him to go down there and deal with it, I'm okay with that. Wouldn't find somebody down there that's willing to do that.
Why don't I broach that with him? I'll be talking to him again in the next couple of days.
Be a little outreach down there.
And I'll ask him if, if that's something he would consider and if he would. You know, I, I think, he does it for free now. I think if we said, we'll be happy to reimburse you. for some of the things you do, it'd be wonderful.
It's four hours, it's not a lot.
So, I guess my question would be.
Be less than mileage.
From an HR standpoint, I guess it'd just be a contract, I mean.
What do we do with Ed?
Well, he's salary.
He's a salary employee.
But for somebody like that, I'd say, yeah, we approach him as a contract laborer.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me, let me broach and see if he has that, that's an excellent idea. Let me, let me broach him with that subject and see how he feels, and maybe he's not direct, maybe someone else.
Somebody, they could scout around here, it'd be better.
I just know him, cause he comes to all the meetings, and I'm sure there's some other people.
He would be interested in making it look nice down there.
Right. I'll, I'll follow up, and then I'll report back to you.
And I've got that form, do you want me to send it to you?
Would you email it to me?
And then if we get to that point, it'd be nice if they could record that, if Ed is gonna go down there, they could shoot you or myself, either one, why matter? Then we could print them off, give them to Ed, so he knows, and says, oh, I need a little electrical stuff, I need a little drywall material, and take with me.
And I've told them, you know, in an emergency, there's a water main break, just get plum to there ASAP, or call me as you're doing that, so, no, that's fine, if you'd email this to me, that'd be great.
I'll do that right now.
Someone local, and, good play, I just don't wanna leave them hanging out there.
No, nor should we, you know, so.
Thank you.
Give me just a second, and I'll do that right now. Well, I said I would, I'll wait.
You do, when you have chances, not wrong, or I could scan that one in.
No, I've got it, I'll certainly send that to you, okay? Anything else under old business, gentlemen?
All right.
Mr. Canada?
Nope.
Nor do I, so we'll move on to new business, would welcome Christine Stanley from CTSI here to give us an, an update on insurance.
It's nice to meet you.
Good morning, how are you? A pleasure to meet you.
I have some folders.
Thank you. Thanks, ma'am.
So, I have a couple of things to present first. This is a certificate that you can frame post, basically shows your standing within the insurance pools, and along with that, we also have a plaque to show your membership and owner of the pools as well, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. So, before you, you have the folder that contains the loss analysis for both the cap and the workers' comp pool. The left-hand side is the cap, which is the casualty auto property pool, and that's where we will start first. This first page shows, is a representation of your county for the last five years, and you can see where it's trending, and that determines your loss factor that determines your contribution amount. So, in November, you guys received this book, it's the yellow and blue, and that determines, in there, it's your loss factoring and your contribution amount, and how all of that boils down. So you can see that you've been trending, you've been trending well, your factoring, your contribution amount is factored off of two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, so, your contribution amount this year was taking those three years into effect. So ideally, we would like anything under a hundred percent, a hundred percent means we're not tapping into equity. So, which you guys, you can see our graph, you guys are doing really well there. Uh, folders? Sorry, I need to see that.
Thank you.
So, you have one of the lowest loss factors in, that we offer for this upcoming year. The forecasting for next year, what you can look at is fourteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. So, you're still, you're still within a pretty good range there, and that's one of the benefits of the pool, is that it's a lagging indicator, it's lagging, it takes the last five years, but then it takes the latest of those, those five years, the latest three, and, so you can kinda get an idea of where you are, so you're not going to, it kind of helps you with those ebbs and flows of, you know, any claims that do come in. Do you guys have any questions on this first page?
Looks pretty good, it's going down.
Yeah, doing really well. So this next page is how the, the cap pool is doing as a whole, so, all of the counties that are members of the cap pool, you can see where they rank. So again, anything under a hundred percent, that is equity, that comes back to you by way of equity returns and fee discounts, anything over a hundred percent means that it tapped into equity. So you can see that we do have that one spike in two thousand and fourteen that did go over, and, but, everything since then has been trending down, so.
What's it based against, a hundred percent of what?
Uh, contributions, so, of the fifty-one counties that contribute into the cap pool, all of the contributions, and then any, any claims that go over, that's the hundred percent mark. So, whether the contributions were the same as the money that was, that was paid out.
Okay, so that's for all of them?
Yeah.
So, so looking at this, it looks like, and tell me why, God, this statement doesn't make sense, but, it's to me like, because Custer County's loss is lower than the average, are we supplementing the, the rest of the members?
Um, it's not supplementing exactly, because you can see that even though you have some years where you, you're really low, some years you're almost right at a hundred percent too. So, it does take those ebbs and flows, and because it is a community pool, uh, if you do have, and that's where, that's where our job comes in at CTSI, is looking at where we see those losses, and making those recommendations to the counties that do exceed.
Okay, thank you, well, you're looking at the cap loss?
Yeah.
The other, the other side?
For your county?
That's ours, that's for our county, Custer, so what is, uh, in twenty fifteen, what's, what, why did we approach a hundred percent? We have, of all our stuff that was insured, we lost ninety-eight percent of it?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, so, in the pages.
Huge problem.
It is, in the pages, we have, in the back, we'll be able to see, go into, like, the type of claims that we've had, that we experienced.
Mm, and there's sixty-four counties in the county, sixty-two of them are member of CCI, and you say you have fifty-one counties participating, so significantly less number than are actually members of CCI.
Yeah, so, the Denver metro, uh, those counties are, they're, they have their own pools, yeah. But, one of the things I wanted to show in this, in this graph, with all of the counties in the pool, you can see that it's below a hundred percent, so, you guys are getting a return on that. So not only the equity is not being, all the contributions aren't being spent.
You get a dividend, Jay.
Are you banking the difference between a hundred percent and, and the actual loss?
Yeah, so.
You have, if I remember, you have a huge, in my mind, a huge reserve.
We, we have to have a certain amount of reserve in each pool to have that. But you can see in the, in the blue booklet that you would have received in November at the CCI conference, it has your base contribution.
We don't have that.
We don't have that in the book we got before.
Yeah, so you'd be able to find your county, and based off, be able to look at how it's being broken down, and you'd be able to see what your contribution amount is, just taking those factors in, but then you would be able to see that from the discount, the return of the, the interest income, and then also the equity distribution that wasn't spent the previous. Then, that basically takes your contribution, it's a savings of about twenty-five thousand dollars.
And can you tell us just briefly what drove the spike in two thousand and fourteen statewide, you know, through those fifty-one counties?
Yeah, so, those, that spike is contributed to several different claims, but the ones that we attributed the spike to were related to an embezzlement, employee theft. It was, it was something that we hadn't seen in the years leading up to that. In the history of the pool, we had four claims, so in thirty-plus years, we had four claims, but in that year, we had four claims just in that one year, so, it was something that.
Fake and claims, huh?
Yeah, and it was things that we didn't, they had, some of them had been going on for quite a while, for ten years, but it all kind of came to a head, yeah. So, to answer your, one of the questions that you had in two thousand and fifteen, the next page is the first chart, and it shows, these are all the claims in, over the last five years. So you can see the number of claims and the severity of claims, and in our world, severity equals the dollar amount that was spent out in those.
It's incredible that administration is higher than road and bridge, is that because the number of people in that group?
So administration is your group, this is, think of it as like the, the, your county. So this is where your civil rights claims are going to take a hit, it's not your admin department.
Okay, all right, I was thinking of our employees falling down and making a workers' comp claim, that kinda thing, I get you, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, and this is the liability side too, so, this is all.
That makes sense.
Claims coming in from the public, so you may see in the workers' comp side, a little different there.
So, basically from, excuse me, two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen, there's been one public safety claim in four years, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Mm-hmm. And that was a, a deer, your public safety department had a deer run in, it looks like. So.
This is county.
Right.
Yes, this is.
This is our county.
Yes. The next page is, the next chart, it breaks down those claims over the last five years, the same ones, but now it breaks it down not by department, but, but by type of claim, so you can see where, where it kinda fits in there.
This may be kind of an off-the-wall, but the discrimination claims, it says there were four.
Mm-hmm.
Are they all from the same person?
I have.
I, I don't really wanna know who it is, I'm just curious if it's all the same person.
I don't believe I have the same.
That's okay.
That information, what I have are claim numbers.
Okay, that's fine.
In order to reference back.
That's fine, thank you.
What's others got in it?
So, those are gonna be anything that has one frequency, so, you may have, like you see, you have three vehicles striking an animal, but you have one jackknife rollover, so that's gonna fall in the, the other category in the top, but it's gonna be down below. You're gonna have, uh, let me see, backing, anything that is a one, has been one claim over, yeah.
Okay. So these are claims against the county by somebody who got backed into.
Or it's property damage.
And how does a deer fall into that?
Because the cap side is your auto side as well, so if there was damage to the vehicle.
Well, sure, but it's a county deer.
A county vehicle.
Yeah, a county vehicle.
It's a county vehicle in this case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it can go both ways.
Right.
Got it.
So any vehicles we're talking about here are vehicles owned by the county?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Cause we could've caused the rollover.
Yeah, the, the rollover one was a county vehicle, the striking an animal, those would be county vehicles as well. Backing could be both, depending on what was backed into. The next page is the, the backup to how those charts were put together, so you can see.
The data line.
Yeah, exactly, so you can see the department, and then you can see the type of claims, and the dollar amounts that were associated with them. One of the things that we're seeing that is almost reaching epidemic proportions is vehicle claims, and we're seeing that throughout all the, all the counties within the pool, and it's one of the things that we're spending a lot of money in the pool on, whether it's fixing, you know, repairing the county vehicle, or if we're involving other property damages as well, it's, you know, and it seems like something that we can, we look at them as, a small portion of them are non-preventable, you may be able to, the deer, you know, may run into the car, even though you have taken precautions, so even though you've attended a defensive driving class, the deer may still strike your car somewhere. But, the other ones that we're seeing are, we're looking at, have we taken defensive driving classes? Yeah, and, so we have a really big push right now with all of our counties that are part of the pool, because we are, because it's, it's coming, like, you're going, you're seeing it, you're seeing it because what we're seeing is, when we look at the cap side, the, the prices that we get for excess carriers are charging us more, which in turn is charging all of the counties more, and, you know, like, it's, we're, we're just passed through, so, it's something that, one of the attachments that we have in the folder is the sample fleet safety program, it's something that we have put together that we would like you to review and see if it's something that, you know, you would want to institute for your county, because of the claims that, that we've had over those last five years, you can see where the animal, or the, where the vehicle ones come into play with the liability. So, of your, of the claims that you've had over that last five years, you have had several vehicle ones as well. So, maybe the fleet policy is something to take a look at, maybe a defensive driving course, uh, we like to do those every three years, and based off.
And you provide that at no cost, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
I just got an email, I think, today or yesterday, from you about defensive driving.
Where is it done?
We can do it wherever, we come to you. And, I can look here to see, I don't, I don't show that we've done a defensive driving class for you over the last five years, unless you're getting, having that done somewhere else. So sometimes law enforcement, um, your sheriff's department, or your ambulance service, sometimes counties are doing it that way, but it is something that we offer as well, we like to, from.
Before we run off on that, cause that's, you're really intriguing me, I see our chairman writing notes too.
Mm-hmm.
I would recommend to my patrons here that that's something we really wanna look at, look into.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what is the best procedure to get that happening? Do we just send an email to you saying we would like to schedule it, and then speak to the ambulance, and the, the fire, and the police, and our county employees who drive? Is that, was that the best way to handle it? How do we get it up and running, is what I really wanna know.
Yeah, just contacting us, we can, we like to break it down, so we have, we have a defensive driving class that focuses on first responders, because the liability, once you turn on those lights, is a little bit different than if you're just in a county car or truck, so, we like to split it out, so if we have first responders, so, that class covers the, the appropriate vehicles that they're doing, exactly. And then, we have one for cars and trucks, and then we also have one for road and bridge that covers equipment, if they're traveling with motor graders, things like that, cause again, the liability is gonna be a little bit different, but they all cover cars and trucks.
I, I like the idea, we should, but I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
What data are you looking at that makes it look like it's catastrophic, terrible thing that we did? What are you looking at?
We're looking at all of the claims in the cap pool.
In Custer County only, or, so, okay.
All of the.
So you see statewide there is an issue, I wanna know if, how we compare to that, and do we have drivers that are out of control or not?
Uh, a lot of your vehicle claims are related to striking an animal, weather-related, things like that, where there could, without going back the five years and looking at each. where there could, without going back the five years and looking at each individual claim, there could have been different measures taken, or-
So the reason I ask the question is so we can focus whatever you're going to come down here for. We can't, we'd waste your time and ours if we're going to go through something that we don't do.
Right, exactly, exactly. Um, we're looking at just any, this is a recommendation that we make for every county that we're making this year, so-
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, just to get it, get it in the right-
Yeah, I would guess probably that Shannon is currently involved in some kind of a defensive driving program. That's what I was making a note about to discuss this with him.
I thought he-
Didn't he go out at the airport?
Yeah, yeah.
He's just not long-
A couple months ago.
Shannon being our show.
Okay.
Uh, but I made a note to have that discussion with him and see what he's doing, because it seems like that's, obviously down in Roden Bridge are the two areas that-
Those guys from running a car.
We're having those claims again.
A few years ago, maybe five, seven years ago, um, our, our posse, a couple of our posse members had, it was just like bumper cars.
Mm-hmm.
You guys came down, had the class, and we've not had a single claim since at the posse's end. So it was really good.
And again-
Posse driving bumper cars now?
It was highly scary here for a while. It was just scary. And, and so it was much better when they realized the, the level of how important it was, of what they were driving and what they were doing, so-
Right.
That was-
Would you have these figures broken out just for two thousand and seventeen, or no?
I could give you a rough idea here. So there was the, striking a deer happened in seventeen, vehicle backing happened in seventeen, and striking, well, I'm assuming it's a deer, um, striking another animal. So two animals and one backing.
Okay.
Those occurred in seventeen.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
And then this last page is, since the inception of the pool, you can see where the claims have been, where we're spending our money, where, well, where your money's going, actually, and the type of claims. So you can see where vehicles fall in, not only in the top, the top ten, but the top twenty, and how much the dollar amount is associated with it. So it is something that, you know, like I said, we're, we're putting the sample fleet policy for every county, and we're encouraging defensive driving. And one of the other things that we're looking at too is civil rights. Uh, sexual harassment, discrimination, things like that. There seems to be, uh, you know, that, the climate and the atmosphere right now is, you know, kind of a, that's another issue, you can see that that's, uh, also in one of our top ten, top twenty. So having those types of, of classes too, just to kind of make sure. Also, depending on where it is in your grant season, um, your grant time, will make a difference if you need to, if you don't already have, like if you don't use us to do that class, uh, and you have somebody else, then, certainly. We just want to make sure, whether, whether you have us or you have somebody else do it, we just want to make sure that, you know, we're kind of looking at all of, all of the factors of the claims that we've experienced lately.
Very telling.
Good job of holding it together too.
Oh, thank you.
Boy.
Doesn't take much for a gunshot to set us all back, does it?
Oh, no, and, you know, unfortunately, most of those gunshots are almost self, like not self-inflicted, but pulling it out.
Excellent. Shot themselves.
Shot themselves, yeah, there you go.
Almost three hundred thousand dollars per claim, the highest of any listed. Vehicle striking a vehicle-
Mm-hmm.
Could include a sheriff's vehicle driving another, forcing another vehicle off the road, ramming a vehicle.
Yep, damage to the, if there was damage inflicted to the sheriff's vehicle, that would be included in here.
Would it include the damage to the other vehicle as well, or no?
Uh, there is a, there is, that's a, that's a good Patty question, but from my understanding, I believe that if the person is doing something illegal, then that's where governmental immunity comes in.
Okay.
Man, very telling.
It's, uh, yeah, that's brutal, that whole gunshot thing.
Four hundred and seventy-seven claims, inmate-related, inmates who injured police officers, or police officers who injured inmates, or-
So it's a variety, it's, because this is all how it's being reported to us. So one county may say that in, a detention officer who the, had a, was dealing with a combative inmate, had an injury, it may be reported as inmate-related, or it may be reported as, there's, there's another, there's another classification that some counties use.
It's okay.
So it just depends on how it's related to us. The inmate-related on the liability side, usually what some of those claims are that, that I see are excessive force claims, or they could be something happened to them while they were in custody.
And just for information for our folks in the audience, we're talking about from nineteen eighty-eight through two thousand and seventeen, from the inception of the pool.
Exactly.
Do you have a board of some kind that adjudicates this and says that's a valid claim? That's not, how do you enforce it?
So we have, we have our claims department in CTSI that goes through all of the claims, and then Patty, who oversees all of that, will, if there's any questions, there's managers in each of the cap pools and the workers' comp pool, and then Patty oversees all of that. And then both of the, the board of directors is made up of commissioners from varying counties for each pool. So if there's, you guys are looking at it on a-
So somebody can dispute the binding, and there's some way to go and go to the next level?
Yeah, typically, if that was, that was the case, then the liability side typically involves defencing, defenseman, defense costs, so-
Got you.
You know, fighting it through, you know, the law process. If there's no more questions on the liability side, we can move over to workers' comp, which is going to be on the right-hand side. So here, this first page, again, is your county over the last five years. You can see where you fall. Um, again, your loss factor is based off of the thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, so your contribution and for this year would have been taking those three years into account. For next year, thirteen's going to fall off, and we're going to do fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. So you can see where it's going to, where it's going to go.
So it's going to be a while before sixteen gets dropped off, isn't it?
It is, it is.
And again, any idea about that spike? Certainly significantly greater than-
So the spikes- Yeah, absolutely. The spikes could be contributed to either frequency of claims or severity of claims. So it's kind of made up, that spike could be contributed to different things. And it looks like, it looks like it's a severity claim. It looks like in sixteen, there was one claim that was an ergonomics claim. And if we go over to the graphs, we can see the dollar amount that's associated with that claim. So even though that department had six claims, they're in red here, um, the dollar amount, they're first in blue, down in severity. Yeah.
Money.
So that, that would have contributed to the spike. And if you look at what your contribution is, so the workers' compensation pool takes your loss factor, which was point oh seven, which was really low, uh, so it puts you in the lowest category. And that puts, that gives you about a ten thousand dollar savings for that. So if you look at your contribution to workers' comp, being, you know, about eighty-five for that year. The next page with the chart is the same thing. This is the counties over, the counties that are, the fifty-two counties that are in the workers' compensation pool, and-
Same number, fifty-one?
Uh, fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
And again, anything over a hundred percent is paid out from equity. So you can see that there were a couple of spikes. Those are sometimes in vehicle claims, which is why we see, what we see in vehicle claims is sometimes there's not only the property damage that's going to be on this side, you're also going to have an employee injury, which is going to hit on the workers' comp side. So it's potentially hitting us on both sides there. And because we're seeing such a frequency, a high frequency of those claims, then, you know, that's why we're, you know, we're seeing it as it's hitting both sides, and it's having consequences both ways.
Is Frank Dazars office calling you often? I'm serious, I mean, do you get these ambulance chasing guys calling you all the time trying to make claims?
No.
Good.
No.
That's good, good answer, thank you.
So the first chart, again, kind of breaks down the number of claims. These are workers' comp claims over the last five years, and it breaks it out by department, so you can see which department has the most frequency of the highest number of claims. But you can see how that relates to, you can have frequency, but that doesn't necessarily really, uh, relate to severity.
It's necessary.
Right, so you can have one claim, and typically ergonomic claims can, just like, just like you were making a note of the gunshot, you know, the gunshot, we only had fifteen, but they were very high in cost. So sometimes frequency, frequency can be a predictor, but we don't always look at it that way.
So how can we have, uh, claims and know, uh-
Denied.
Yeah, they just deny them, is that what that boils down to, or not?
Some of them are, are you referring to the two that have the zero dollar amounts? So those are related to claims that were reported, but didn't have, didn't seek medical care. This next chart breaks it down not by department, but the type of claim, and then the dollar amounts associated with them. So you can see where ergonomics falls in. We look at slip, trips, and falls as ergonomics. We look at it as, uh, safety awareness as well. But body mechanics falls into ergonomics. We also, so if you look at slip, trips, and falls, body mechanics, falling or being thrown, lifting, those kind of all fall into that same general ergonomics.
Yeah, I'm still blown away by, what was that, two thousand and sixteen, when we had an eighty-three percent, eighty-six percent?
And we have zeros right next to that, which is kind of bizarre.
And again, that one claim, you can see-
Right.
Is that ergonomic issue?
And that'll continue to haunt us until probably, what, twenty-twenty-one?
Mm-hmm, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, yeah. But when you look at, if you have that spike of one year, like you, like you do here, because it's so low on both sides of it, as long as, as it trends low, then it should, should not have an effect. And because you have such a, since you're so low there, you should have a wide gap of, you know, even if you, your loss factor went up, you know, like point three, it would still probably keep you in the lowest bucket.
Okay, thank you. I'll sleep a little better in a little bit.
And then, then again, the next page just shows the backup detail for the, for the graphs, so you can have an idea of department and the type of, type of injury and the dollar amounts that were associated with it.
Overall, you know, what, we got fifty counties and a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars worth of claims, it's not too bad.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I was just looking for-
Well, wait, I was, I had a decimal point in my mind. A hundred and ninety-five million.
Yeah.
Still not-
From the inception, is that the one you're looking at?
Yes.
That's a long period of time.
Yeah, it's a long period of time. Must be bad.
And you can see ergonomics is definitely one of the top trend items there too.
Yes, it's a long period. Alright.
So if you don't have any questions, the things that, the things that we're recommending this year are the civil rights and defensive driving, fleet policy, things like that. So those are, those would be my takeaways for your county for this year. I don't think that, uh, you know, some of it is proactive in nature instead of reactive, and from loss prevention, that's kind of what we, what we strive for.
Civil rights, what are we referring to? I mean, I understand defensive driving makes perfectly great sense, it's a fair thing, but what do you, what, what kind of claim is the civil rights, and what can we do to help allay those?
So those are going to be harassment, discrimination, and what is kind of classified as, um, failure to have service. So not being able to communicate in the language that your citizens could communicate in, those type of things. So just making sure that it kind of looks at all of that.
Do you provide any of that civil rights training in-
We do, we do. We have an HR specialist, and so depending on her schedule and depending on my schedule, it just depends on which one of us ends up doing that class.
We use training from CTSI in the past. I just want to remember, it's all, there's no cost to it, I mean, it's all part of our policy. We just need to say, hey, come help us.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And Dennis Hunt does it to us for free.
Oh, yeah, I, he came out here last month, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
He's been out here multiple times, and it's helped us immensely, especially like in the budgeting.
Yeah.
He really taught us how to do it, the commissioners, I'm sure our staff knew how to do it, but he taught the commissioners what we're supposed to do and how to do it, it was great.
Yeah, anything that, uh, CTSI only, if we get involved with grant writing, it's the only thing that would be an additional fee, and that's something that Alan and Dennis, but from what I hear, it's like very nominal. So, but everything else is like value-added.
And I can't remember, does our dues to CCI include CTSI, or is that a separate dues?
It's separate.
Separate.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, really do.
Hope it was worth your trip.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's nice, thank you. We'll flip to see who gets to take that.
Ah, people hanging on the wall.
Well, thank you, Christine, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, did you have something else, Donna, or are you good?
No, I was just going to tell you guys, if, if you ever want to know any of the claims or anything, if you come over, I've got them locked in there, you know, that kind of would be. Sometimes it's just one thing and a dumb thing that causes all the money.
I'm hoping if we have an insect claim, you'll come tell us about that.
No, it dog bites you, it's big.
I see we've had one somewhere along the way, so-
The dog bite thing is, is big.
Again, thank you, Christine, we appreciate you taking the time to drive down here.
Have a safe trip home.
Our next item on the agenda would be public comment. Uh, certainly would entertain that at this time. Yes, sir?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I better let her go first.
You sure? Yeah.
A few weeks ago, Bill, you mentioned something about, um, the documentation for the tourism board requiring, uh, members of the tourism industry being on that.
Three, three guys.
Okay, I was just curious, Jay, if that was something that you're going to bring up with the tourism board?
Yeah, that was brought to my attention also about-
Yeah, that was brought to my attention also about a couple of weeks ago. I would need to know who's in that industry and how to move forward on that. I mean, I, I recognize that that's supposed to be on there, but if we can't find people in that industry, it's hard to do, so.
Is it from tourism industry as a whole, or specific categories?
The board actually says that they, I mean, if you look at the bylaws, it says that they'll have people on there from the tourism industry. And, you know, how do you define that? What qualifies for that? You know, really tough questions to answer.
I wouldn't, I'm surprised. I wouldn't think so, but. Well, I mean, if, if the tourism board couldn't identify that, we're all in trouble, right?
We have a guy who does websites for tourism. Is he in the tourism business, or is he a website developer? Those are the kind of que, well, that's right. And those are the kind of questions that come up.
We got things like the-
Service industry.
Well, that and, and town, trying to attract people. The railroad guys, you know, the stuff that attracts people up here.
All aboard West Cliff.
All aboard West Cliff, mainly.
Well, I tell you, why don't I, we have another meeting coming up, and then that's, I don't remember exactly, but I got it on my calendar. I'll bring that question up soon.
See what they come up with.
You, I guess I don't remember, your question stemmed as to the makeup of the board?
Right, well, there's a, there's actually a bylaw, resolution says three must be from there, and the other from-
It's the resolution that it was-
That it was founded by.
Founded, right. Voted on by the public for the bed tax, I think. Maybe.
That's part of it, maybe the bed and breakfast guys.
Yeah, I don't know. Is it, is a bed and breakfast owner a tourism person?
Oh, I was thinking-
Those are the kind of questions that, that become significant, so, but I think the question's fair, and I think I'll bring it up, and I'll ask Mr. Weisbacher.
You want to have people that are trying to track people for that, and they have good input back, I guess, the way you look at it. The Trails West Cliff thing, is that tourism?
Trails for all, that'd be tourism.
I would certainly think Trails for all is tourism.
Seenby Byways, anybody involved in that stuff, I would think would fall into that, but I would think the tourism board certainly should have the wherewithal to-
And then there's the business, the county business, maybe the airport guys, you know, you're bringing in, well, even the rodeo, you know, kind of things that they're trying to attract tourists, but keep them in here. I don't know, figure out who the makeup is today and-
Great. All right, thank you, sir, for pursuing that. Anything else? Jackie?
Nope.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Flowers.
How are you?
Gentlemen, I'm John CJ Goble.
Bill Cannon.
Hi, Bill, nice to meet you.
From the old days.
Mr. Smith.
Nice to meet you.
Ghost of Christmas.
Hello, Jackie, how are you? Good to see you. And Juan, I'm Brenda.
I'm back in my chair when you walked in.
What was your name?
Uh, John CJ Goble. Everybody knows me as CJ. As you know, I'm your neighbor in the old stone house. I bought that stone house in nineteen ninety-six.
Where?
Next door.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, the old stone house, it's known as the-
You're our immediate neighbor.
Uh, not, not, I don't live there. I had to leave the valley about ten years ago due to health, and through the ten years, I've been feeling a lot better, so I came out here.
You don't look too bad.
Well, it's all internal.
Okay.
You know, like a Cadillac with the engine shot. But anyway, I wanted to see how I did on this trip, and so this is the last day of my trip, and I want to come back to the community. I spent a lot of years here, and what we did was, we restored that house and put it on the historical registry with the, called the Mercier House. And the only association that I was able to have Irene and Stan Francis do with the association of the courthouse was that Mrs. Mercier was actually part of the actual groundbreaking of the courthouse. And so, of course, we have records of all of that through the history. My partner and I have discussed it, and we felt that it would be probably most important to talk to the commissioners or to the county to see if they would want to, be interested in this building before, if I had to sell it, and put it out to the public. And I think it's just the neighborly right thing to do, and, and I was fortunate that we were able to preserve that building. And so I, I don't know if I need to be on another agenda later, or is it something that we can-
What are you opposing? That we buy it?
Well, one thing is, is that my partner and I, I fixed a lot of buildings here in town, and, and so we wanted to make things better. So we were thinking, even if someone wanted to make a long-term lease down the road, thirty years, or, you know, or something, or buy it, or whatever, I know that, you know, I'm just putting it out there, it's up to you, gentlemen, to talk about it and see if there's anything that, that might want to keep that as part of your community and the courthouse, maybe a separate office, but it is kind of a museum.
It is on the historic registry?
Yes, correct.
So the uses would be severely limited, I'm assuming, huh?
No, I didn't do a national registry. I did a state registry. So the state registry level had us do all the outside, exterior, and it was done to their specifications. They came up and said, this is the roofing you do, this is this, and all of that, and so everything on the exterior was approved by them. There was one face that wasn't finished, and that's the north porch, it was a, kind of like a crown porch there, and, and we didn't, we didn't get to finish that part. But, so I, I just, you know, I knew the, on the agenda today was going on, and I stopped in yesterday to see if I could run in to say hello, especially Mr. Flowers, because I know you really well. But anyway, I wanted to just present that idea, and, and maybe if we go to the, if there's something that you want us to do, or like come up with maybe like an idea or a proposal or something, and submit it to the county.
I would guess probably that would be, if you want to pursue that, I would think that'd be appropriate.
Yeah, at, at least we can resolve whether or not it's going to stay on the block, you know.
You need to give us sort of a timeline, because we are looking at the future, how we're going to consolidate and change things, and even migrate into the county buildings in a better way for the future, and that could be some of the thinking, but we, we need to know if you're in a great runaway to get it leased, sold, or whatever.
Well, the worst case for you guys is I'll be your neighbor, probably in a few years if I stay healthy, and then that's where I'll take my naps on the porch. Because that's my favorite building of all my projects in the valley that I did. And, and pretty soon I'll be the longest owner of, of the history. Thirty years Mercier, thirty years Mary Lou, and hopefully I-
Yeah. Well, interesting, I just, I guess it was yesterday, I left here to go south, and I looked at that house, and I thought, I wonder what is happening?
Well, that's why I came.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to stop in, but there was like a calling or something, I don't know.
Interesting. Now, where are you living now?
Well, I've been in Temecula, California for the past ten years, and-
Do you have another place up here?
Uh, I, yes, I just cleaned up Silver Cliff over here next to the roadhouse, there was a lot of junk in one of my buildings, and so we just evicted everybody, and I would been, I have a crew that's cleaning that mess up. And then I also own, our partnership owns the three oh seven Main Street next to the West Cliff Town Governor, that little blue and white building. That's the only assets we have left up here. I had to sell the ranch and stuff.
Why don't you donate it to the county?
Well, you know, I would, but I, what happened to me health-wise was not a workers' comp case, it was a personal case, and I had no insurance. And so it financially took a toll on me. And, you know, I don't have a problem humbly saying that, you know, it's been a rough road.
Sorry to cut it off.
And, yeah, and so, you know, the government, you know, when you file things, they don't work out, but we just move on, and, and we're surviving. And I, you know, but I do have twenty-eight screws in my spine.
Oh, gee.
Yeah, so, but to be here and to be around everybody and here today is a blessing, so.
Good. Well, back to your point, I wonder if you're interested, would the board entertain some kind of a presentation without you having to actually be here, if you were comfortable that, if you're going back to California or whatever in the next thirty days or forty-five days?
Well, I want to come back.
Give him a reason.
Yeah, if we, if we, give me, I do want to come back. I, I plan to be back in April, and I was talking to Brenda about the calendar, maybe I'll schedule to come back to the next meeting. But I really, there's so much of my life here in this valley that I really miss it, you know.
Come back, and you need to give us a presentation and give us options.
Okay, so get on the agenda and then go from there.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, don't you?
Yeah, and if-
And if we have any interest in this, I would like to walk through the building.
Yeah, and they're-
For us to talk about what would you do with it? What do we need it for?
We're talking about a site tour.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we could put that on the agenda, too, and I'll arrange it with Dave Purnell. So if I had a spokesman, I usually have Dave Purnell help me, because he is my property manager, and I've known him since day one I got here. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Well, good, I'm glad to see everybody. Yeah, pleasure.
Nice to meet you.
It's been a while.
Nice to see you, Jack. I'm glad to be back.
Yep. Good job.
Well, thank you for coming by. CJ, appreciate it.
See, I'm glad I stayed.
Yeah, there you go.
I was a choke.
Other, public comment? Hearing none?
I got a, just a note, if you wanted now.
Go ahead.
The tobacco's going to be delivered next week.
Cool.
The tires we get are shop best tire product for the price in his stores. We GCR gets it. There's a little bid. Majority of the business. And if you want to know about fuel prices, we can ask him when he comes back for the policy.
And speaking of that, something that kind of, while we were talking, while we're still in session, we were talking to Rusty. We have a policy on purchasing items that have, there's a certain cost level, once it's above, you have, I mean, our policy is you have to go out and bid and that kind of stuff. So I would just like to make sure that we're following the policy, that's all I'm concerned with.
Yeah. And purchasing policies right on the commissioner's-
Right. And he may totally-
Just make sure everybody aware of it.
Well, that's right. He may be perfectly within the policy, I'm just concerned when he said, oh, we've always borrowed from someone. Gosh, I hope that's, that's within our policy, isn't it? It's all I'm concerned about.
And it's actually, I think the purchasing policy is under finance, isn't it, on the website?
Yes.
I'm looking, as we speak, I am looking. It's in RFPs.
On the left-hand side.
Right-hand side?
Policy manual.
Purchasing policies.
It's a terrible thing to be that-
You got a, if that's emblazoned in your mind.
Yeah, investments. Purchasing and contracting.
And then site tour.
I bet Donna can answer all these questions.
There's like eight million policies, too many, after you keep going through them, you through them. She could probably do better than I could. Tell us what it is.
I think it's over five hundred dollars, but I don't know. Exactly.
Informal. It's over five hundred?
Yeah, five hundred to ten thousand.
What happens there?
You have to get three bids.
When you go, when you go over ten?
And then an informal written bid review.
That was just a concern I had when we talked, I mean, I, I mean, we're going to, we can't sporadically enforce policy. You have to, but you don't. So I think if we're going to have it, we need to enforce it. I mean, at least ask our people to follow.
Well, and, and you know, I, I agree with what you're saying, sir. We buy a lot of fuel for this county, and we have three local vendors. Well, if, if they have not had an opportunity to be involved in that, then I think we're remiss. If they cannot compete because they don't have a way to deliver that fuel, then that's-
But the key really is, isn't it?
Well, I think the policy actually addresses if there's only one supplier, you don't need to do it, and if there's, you know, mitigating circumstances, you know, I've read that policy.
The best overall value, and that, that one is key, that it's the best overall value, even though maybe it costs a little bit more, but you could have it four days sooner where it would not make a problem hap, you know, different things along that line that, even though it was maybe two seats more, but it was, and, and there is local advantage in there listed as well, you know.
And who would determine those things? Yourself?
The Board of County Commissioners. But there's a lot of, not open-ended, but really it gives you a lot of ease of doing it, and then there's even actually one spot in there that shows if we were in an emergency, you guys just make the doggone call right then and there, and it's done, instead of that we bogged down and there's been injury or something because of it, so.
Yeah, and we've had kind of the same discussion with the Office of Emergency Management. I certainly am not up to speed on all the policies that would be in place when it comes to spending money in case of fires and this and that.
Well, I think just it'd be incumbent upon the guys that are in charge of those areas to make sure they're aware of the policy, and then they come to us when they hit a threshold.
And ordinarily, in the emergencies, when I've been at the IC, I have had a commissioner sign a letter that says five hundred dollars per day is the limit. Because ordinarily, when it's that big, we get a declaration, and then it go, it reverts to them, and then we're off the hook.
Right.
But that way, that, but always, it was always, Kit was always there, and he would sign that, and it was, that was the cap. And anything above that, you had to find that commissioner to ask, so that we would not have Blackhawks and things being ordered without, without, you know. I know, I did, too. I asked Kit really nicely if he would let me have a Blackhawk, and he said no. He said no.
Anything else, gentlemen? Hearing no further business, we will adjourn the meeting. Let the record show that happened at eleven forty-eight.
Fifty-two.
I'm sorry, fifty-two. Keep going backwards.
So those chairs?
Want new ones?
Are an insurance violation. I mean, are plenty waiting to happen.